Morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us today at our regular county council meeting, June twenty six, two thousand and twenty five. I would like to call this meeting to order at nine thirty. We will start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight Traditional Territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. We do have Counselor Wallach on Zoom today, and we will look for the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Okay. We will now go around council to decide which, oh, sorry.
Sorry, six point one for deletion.
I'm sorry?
Six point one for deletion.
Okay, we will split the question on this one. All right. I think we will go ahead with that motion now before we go ahead with the rest of the approval of the agenda. Counselor Minz would like to, well, the motion on the table is Counselor Hall would like to delete six point one. So if we can go around for the vote on that one, all those in favor of deleting six point one, one, two, three, four, and those opposed, one, two, three, four, five, thank you. It's five and four. We will now go through and decide which items the council would like to decide upon, the ones that to discuss. The ones that I have marked down are two point one, three point one, five point one, five point two, five point three, seven point one, seven point two, eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, nine point two, eleven point one AI, and all of our in closed session items thirteen point one through thirteen point five. Are there any others? Okay. Are there any others that council would like to add to the agenda to discuss? Okay.
Oh.
Oh, go ahead.
Eleven point one W.
Eleven point one W. Wow, again. And go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Ed, and six point one, please.
Six point one. Alrighty. Anybody else? Last call. All right, I'll run through those again. Council will be discussing two point one, three point one, five point one, five point two, five point three, six point one, seven point one, seven point two, eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, nine point two, eleven point one W, eleven point one AI, thirteen point one through thirteen point five. Go ahead.
Six point three.
Six point three. Okay. So that's the last addition, six point three, I think. Does everybody have that one? Alrighty, is there a motion to accept the agenda? Counselor Chamzik would like to accept the agenda as discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and no opposed? One opposed, two opposed, seven and two. Thank you. And we have three point one, which is our public hearing that we will go into now. So good morning, everyone. We have, yeah, attendance. Okay, great. Good morning. Thank you. Alrighty. We have a few coming in on Zoom. Do we, should I wait for a few more? Okay. All right, good morning, everyone, and thank you for attending the public hearing for Bylaw zero one zero two thousand and twenty five. I'm Tracy Holland Reeve for Athabasca County, and I will be the Chair of the hearing. This hearing is being held to discuss the updates to and revision of the Animal Control Bylaw zero one zero two thousand and twenty five, formerly known as the Dog Control Bylaw. On behalf of council, I would like to welcome you here today. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment for introductions, beginning with council on my right.
Rob Minz, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake, Unilock area.
Good morning, Natasha Kapitanik, Division Two, Collington, Manook, and New Pine Creek.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, Division One, Rochester, Perry, Galeria.
Good morning, Gary Cromwell, Division Six, the far north up to and including Wandering Riveran area.
Kelly Chamzik, Division Seven, Grassland, Crossfida, Atmore areas.
Brian Hall, I live in Division Four.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson, I reside in Division Three, which is the Boyle-Caslin area.
And go ahead, Ms. Wallach, Ms. Wallach.
Good morning, Karen Wallach, Division Nine, North of the River.
Thank you, and I introduced myself here earlier. We also have with us here today Jordan Schenkelberg, he is our Communications Coordinator, Ms. Leo Blair, who's our Recording Secretary, Mr. C. O. Beck, who will be the Secretary of the Hearing. We have, my goodness, we have Krista Director Wilkinson, Communication, I can never get this right, Community and Enforcement Services, close enough, and we have Chief Shalapai with us here as well, Fire, for our Regional Fire Chief. The Secretary of the Public Hearing is Bob Beck, who is the CAO for Athabasca County. Any persons who have joined the meeting in person or via Zoom and wish to be heard should please give your full name now.
I don't know if I'll have anything to say. I'll see what happens here and then, yeah, go from there.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the gallery who would like to speak? Sorry, did I miss someone? Okay, we need to have your names, please. Can I get you to spell that, please? I didn't catch it. Okay, I've got you here, Harley Nazrick, thank you. And anyone else?
Duncan and Karen Turner.
Here we go, thank you, Duncan and Karen Turner, thank you. And I believe it was Richard Nolan who is on Zoom, okay, thank you. Alrighty, is that everybody? Okay, thank you. The public hearing for Bylaw zero one zero two thousand and twenty five is now open. I will now turn the floor over to Secretary Bob Beck.
The purpose of this public hearing is for Athabasca Council, the county, to hear testimony from interested parties. It is not meant to be a debate between presenters, and all comments must be directed to council through the chairperson. Only one person may speak at a time, and each person wishing to provide input to council will have the opportunity to do so. The ground rules of the hearing and the order of speaking will be, Director of Community and Protective Services Krista Wilkinson will speak first to outline the background and provide an explanation of the bylaw. Members of the public who are wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak. Director Wilkinson will be given the opportunity to present closing remarks or address any of the issues presented. Counselors will be given the opportunity to ask questions. Council will then end the public hearing and will later consider the information received at the public hearing. Council will only receive, consider matters raised at the hearing. Only counselors may ask questions of speakers during the hearing. If any persons want to ask questions of a speaker, they must ask the chair to ask the question on their behalf during their presentation, and the chair will only ask the question if the chair wishes to have an answer in order to undertake its consideration.
Thank you so much, C. O. Beck. Before hearing from the public, I would ask Director Wilkinson to provide background and explanation of the proposed bylaw.
Thank you, good morning. Work has been ongoing on the updates and revision of the Animal Control Bylaw, formerly known as the Dog Control Bylaw, since it was first presented to council in January of twenty four. Aligning closer with the current best practices and legislation, the revised bylaw addresses several existing gaps in the current bylaw with the intent of promoting responsible pet ownership. Not having suitable access to animal boarding facilities, Athabasca County faces significant challenges in managing animal control issues and requires a robust suite of tools to ensure that all residents are able to enjoy the region without the negative impacts of improper pet ownership. Administration has taken much time to compare with our neighbors, listen to feedback from residents, take into consideration the feedback from the online survey, and also engage with legal representation on this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any questions or points of clarification they wish to ask the Director? Alrighty. Director Wilkinson, are there any written materials that have been submitted?
Yes, I have one letter here from a resident that they wish to be read into the record.
Thank you.
Dear County of Athabasca bylaw officials, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed Dog Control Bylaw zero one zero two thousand and twenty five, intended to replace Bylaw zero zero four two thousand and sixteen. This proposal does not address the real issue of dogs running at large or livestock injury and death. Instead, it penalizes responsible dog owners, particularly those of us living on agricultural zoned land who support rescue and foster efforts in our community. Unfortunately, I unfortunately cannot make a Zoom meeting at nine thirty AM as most of our working community cannot. With a public town meeting in, at nine thirty, I feel it'll be difficult for folks to share their opinions due to work schedules and other commitments. So I wanted to email my feelings. Hope this will be directed. We move to the county specifically to contribute to the dog community and to avoid interference from municipal bylaws. This new bylaw is a significant government overreach. With shelters at capacity and many turning animals away, what exactly do you expect citizens to do if they already over, are over the proposed dog limit? Many of us, farmers, acreage owners, and small homesteaders have stepped up to take in strays or rehome dogs from families who can no longer care for them. This bylaw discourages that kind of support and could very well worsen the issue of dogs at large. The requirement for overlimit permits for a average rural dog owner is clearly a money grab. This is not a town property where density is a concern. There is no logical or ethical reason to impose dog limits on agricultural land. If the county's goal is truly to deal with irresponsible ownership, then enforce the rules for those who actually let their dogs roam, not those quietly doing their part to help. Have stronger and higher fines for off-leash dogs, severe fines for death to livestock, et cetera. This bylaw is misguided and alienates the very people working to solve the problem. I urge you to reconsider this overreaching legislation. I also think it's incredibly, incredibly important you train your bylaw officer, officers with the utmost care for community and up-to-date knowledge on the bylaws they enforce. There's a particular bylaw officer already telling acreage owners they are over the dog limit that is yet to be accepted and approved. This is a concern. It almost seems as if you do not truly want public opinions and have informed the bylaw officers that is already in fact law. That is beyond unfair to taxpaying members of our community who are in fact not currently breaking any laws. The overreach is absolutely disheartening. I strongly believe this will create a divide between the dog community and the county, and you will have lots of frustrated and resentful farm owners. As a dog owner, rescue dog owner, and foster dog owner who does not ask for any money from the government to support our dogs, we highly disagree with this new bylaw. We also believe you will displace a lot of dogs in the county and create much, much bigger issue in time. Sincerely, the Smith family, Athabasca County Agricultural Zoned Homeowners.
Thank you very much. There are no further, okay, thank you so much. Before I call upon those wishing to speak, there are a few housekeeping items. When you're ready to speak, we would ask that you come to the, the chair and the microphone, direct your presentation to the chair, and limit your presentation to five minutes in duration. When you're ready to speak, please turn on the microphone by pressing the large button on the bottom center of the device. A red light on the microphone will appear, and you will know that it is signaled that it is on. Those who would like to make a presentation in support of Bylaw zero one zero two thousand and twenty five will go first. Those who would like to make a presentation in opposition of the bylaw will go second. Before those wishing to speak begin, please state your name for the record. So I will now call on the first speaker who is in support of Bylaw zero one zero two thousand and twenty five. Alrighty. So I will now call on the first speaker who is in opposition of Bylaw zero one zero two thousand and twenty five. And I believe I have on my sign-in sheet Duncan and Karen Turner. Did I get that right? Please go ahead. Perfect.
Yeah, I would like to comment, I agree with that lady that you wrote her proposal. By having this at nine thirty, on a working day, you shut off a lot of people just the way you are. And for ourselves, we have working dogs and guarding dogs on our farm. At one time, we had ten. They're not pets, they are working dogs, and a working dog only has a short lifespan. Like a teenager, you gotta train it. So you've got trainees, you've got working dogs, and you've got retirees. Our retirees are put in a pen. They don't have, they're looked after, but they don't, can't get out, et cetera, et cetera. So we're over. Our limits are over all the time, what you want. And where is this heading and why are you pushing it? And I don't understand. I guess I'd like to, from you people, to talk, why are you pushing this?
Are you asking council this question?
Yeah, I'd just like to get input. Instead of reading something, I'd like to input from the council, why are you pushing this?
Okay, so this isn't meant to be a debate?
No, I understand that, but I just want verbal input, why are you pushing this? I'm not debating anything.
Okay, we will be discussing this further on in our meeting, so I don't believe, unless council has a question of our presenter, that we can go into answering questions at this time, but correct me if I'm wrong. Are we able to answer questions at this time, or do we wait until it's further into our agenda when the talk?
It's at the will of the chair, it's, the way public hearings are set up, I'll read it again, is not meant to be a debate between presenters and.
So I think we can have that conversation when we get further into our agenda package, when the bylaw comes up on our agenda item. Thank you. Before you go, does anybody have any questions of our presenter? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson, if you'd like to come back, please.
Thank you, through the chair to Mr. Turner. How would you define working dogs in a copy of the bylaw if we were to exclude them? How would you define it? And what do you feel is a fair definition or classification for that?
A working dog is looking after livestock. We have a lot of coyotes where we are. We have a ravine and a flat lake right there. We have wolves, we have cougars, we have coyotes coming through. A working dog is out there with the animals, guarding them, going after coyotes, going after predators. That's a guarding dog. A working dog is like a border collie, which we have, and they're out there herding, gathering animals in when we move them. It's a great help, absolutely great help. I don't know else to define it. They're not there on your doorstep. If they're, if they're on our doorstep, we deal with it. You know, we put them back into the working environment. They're not in our, you know what I mean, they're not a lapdog. And like I said, when their, when their life has ended, or their working life has ended, we retire them. And they cannot get out, they cannot bother their neighbors, et cetera. We look after them. We appreciate their service, what they've done to us. So we look after them. And they have a hard life. They're out there in the elements all the time.
That's it. Okay, thank you so very much. Does anybody else have any questions of our presenter? Okay, thank you so much. I believe we have a second person who would like to speak, Harley Nazrick. Please, thank you.
Hi, my name's Harley Nazrick. I live in the County of Athabasca, and I would just like to speak to this bylaw. First off, by saying I agree with a lot of the sentiments in that written letter. I am very active in the fostering and rescue community. I typically got into it because the county, town, and most of our rescues around here don't intake dogs at the moment. There's such a need that everywhere is over capacity. So I take in strays at my own time, my own dollar. I have for years, and I've become quite well-known in this community for it. People know that if they can't come to the county or scars, they can come to the detachment, and there's a sucker there that will take the dog. That's something I've been doing for quite a while. This concerns me because this could directly impact how I give back to the community with dogs, helping rescue, take them off the street. I train them. I have invested money with animals in train wrecks before rehoming them. I always make sure that they're neutered at my own cost and dollar. I don't charge anybody. That is how I try to give back to the world. This bylaw concerns me because it could directly affect my ability to do that. I don't know what you guys have in place for, if you guys cut off people like me who just want to help animals because we like to, with scars being so full, with people not necessarily being able to go to the county or town, with just the lack of resources already out there, what would be, what would be expected, or what would happen to these animals if people like us are no longer able to step up? I also am a little bit concerned about the bylaw officers being able to go onto my property at any point in time, as I do expect a reasonable amount of privacy. I feel like that is a little bit of an overstep as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before you go, is there anybody who has any questions for our presenter? Okay, thank you very much for speaking today. I believe is, I do have this, John Michaelman, would you like to speak today?
Hi, this is Nick Bawd.
Hey.
So my name is John Michelman. I'm with Harley. So we, exactly the same thing. I love animals, whether it's cats, dogs, doesn't matter what it is. And I'm a firm believer in helping any animals in need. So this bylaw that's being proposed, I'm totally against it as well, especially with your bylaw officer being able to come onto your property at any given time to check it out. I don't believe in that. There, everyone is, we have our right to privacy. So for the bylaw officer to be able to come onto your property and do inspections, whatever, I don't, I don't feel that's necessary unless we're given time heads up. But yeah, the same thing with the letter that was, that was written, that's spot on. Gentlemen, that spoke behind me as well, like, with agriculture people, they shouldn't have a limit. If they need so many amount of dogs to be guardians or a working dog, that shouldn't, shouldn't be a question. If they need that, then I think that's, that's needed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Does council have any, any questions for, go ahead, please?
Thank you for coming in, talking to us. When you read the bylaw, did you, how do you feel the, the overlimit permits? How do you feel the process for permitting overlimits does not address your concerns?
Well, I think there, there definitely should be, you have responsible, responsible owners, just like in the letter, you have responsible owners and you have non-responsible owners. I totally believe that if you're a non-responsible owner and you can't keep your animals in a designated area, then they should be penalized. There should be some that, that happens to them. But for people that we rescue, help rescue, rehome, we train out of our own dollars, we don't ask for help. Gentlemen behind me that has livestock dogs to work, guard, same with ours. We are, we have guard dogs to help deter wildlife away, wolves, coyotes, bears, stuff like that. But I don't think there should be, it should be penalized accordingly, I guess is what I should say.
Thank you.
If that answers your question.
So the, do you feel the overlimit processing, how could we improve the, the language around the overlimit permitting to address your concerns?
I guess if there shouldn't be, well, a farmer or an agriculture person that has, that needs help, I don't think there should be a limit on that. If they need five or ten dogs, and they're being responsible, they're being contained in an area where they need to be, I don't think there should be a, a limit. You have a person that has a puppy mill, for example, where their dogs are being released, you know, they, they can't contain them, then penalize them, for sure. Does that answer that?
Okay, I believe so. That answers your question, Counselor Hall. Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions for our presenter?
I've always expected your, the action.
If you would like to come forward, please, I'm sorry, to the microphone, we have folks on Zoom who need to hear that, yeah.
No worries, I just, the question about the overlimit fee was really good, and I thought I'd speak to that if possible. The overlimit fee, I believe, would be good for certain scenarios. For example, like John said, if people that can't have proven they can't contain their animals have become a nuisance in the community. People that have proven that they can contain their animals, for example, I spend vast amounts of money on training kennels, babysitters when needed for them, people that are demonstrating responsible ownership, that is taking funds away from their ability to maintain their responsible pet ownership. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Can, can you just follow up and, where is the, identify the fee?
Sorry?
You, you said, you talked about an overlimit fee.
Yes, that's what I have been told, that there would be a fee imposed. Ah, let me see. Oh, I don't actually see it in here, but with the, having spoken to different places, I have been told that there would be a fee. If that's incorrect, that is good news.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. I don't believe there was any other questions. Okay. Our last item, our last person that I have on the list is Richard Nolan on Zoom. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for having me. I didn't really prepare anything. I didn't think I was gonna talk, so I'll just kind of go off the, off the heart. So I'm Richard Nolan. My wife works at Second Chance Animal Rescue Society, and I'm one of the very few volunteers out there. And I don't know how many people are really aware of the unique situation they're in, and really all of Alberta's in the overpopulation of homeless animals. There's no option, it's getting worse, things aren't getting under control. And by you closing the doors on, on the number of animals you're allowed to have, you're literally sentencing these animals to their deaths or long-term, basically imprisonment, staying in shelters, pounds, that are just, it's just cruel what you're, what you're considering doing. We need more people to step in and start adopting and fostering dogs. Not less. I can understand the issue in town, a lot of noise problems, animals getting loose, there should absolutely be harsh penalties for irresponsible owners. But in the country, if I have eighty acres to myself, my dogs stay on my property, what is it anyone's business? There's no reason to put a cap on this. I'll say it again, you're sentencing dogs to their death and basically the tortures they live in, in their confined tiny spaces. So I'm very against this. I'm also not supportive of bylocking onto my property to investigate, so I hope you have a warrant for that. What my question would also be, what if you do stumble upon an acreage or a house that is above your numbers? What are you gonna do about the dogs that are over your limit? You gonna put them down, take them away? What's your plan there? So a statement and a question.
Okay, thank you. Again, it's not meant to be a debate, and I'm sure we can have this opportunity to have this discussion further with these questions that are coming forward. Um. At this time, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Nolan? Okay. I believe, thank you, thank you so much for, for speaking. Um, I think we'll just go forward here a little bit. Um, and I'll just ask, is there anyone else from the public that has not spoken and wishes to speak? Alrighty, does the director wish to make any closing comments? Okay, thank you. At this time, does counsel have any additional questions of any speaker or of the staff? Okay, I actually, I do have a question, um, with regards to, um, and this will be directed to, um, Director Wilkinson. With regards to the over limit process, um, if I understand it, uh, correctly, um. It doesn't include working dogs?
Um, Madam Chair, so the over limit, it, um. There's a specific group of working, working dogs, the guide dogs, police dogs, service dogs that it does exempt. Um. I took some really good notes during Mr. Turner's presentation here because one thing we have not found is a good definition of, of working dog. And that was the challenge is how do we, uh, apply that? Because what's a working dog to one resident may be a different definition to somebody else, and there is no common legal definition. So we don't have. An exemption for, uh, agricultural working dogs.
Okay, so that's something we can look at, okay? Um, and the over limit process as well, is that complaint based or is, how is that, um, activated?
Uh, Madam Chair, so the intent was the, much like a burn barrel permit. Uh, residents that do have more than the requisite number of dogs would apply for the over limit permit. Um, they'd be issued the permit and it only becomes an issue, um, should we have two bona fide complaints within a calendar year? Where we would look at that limit. So it becomes an enforcement tool where we do have folks that have more than the prescribed number of animals. And substantiated complaints.
Okay, thank you. Um, and with regards to bylaw entering property, are you able to speak to that as well?
Uh, Madam Chair, so seven point four does allow for, uh, folks that are holding or holders of the permit, uh, enforcement, animal control to enter and do an inspection. Uh, that's consistent with most of our permitting processes, development permits, um. Kennel licenses and, and, and such. Um, that is definitely something we can discuss further if, uh, we desire.
Awesome. Thank you very much for that. Does anyone else have any questions for? Chief Shell, go ahead, Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. Let me flip back to my page here. So, and I, I realize you used the word bona fide, uh, a few times in your discussion and I appreciate that, but. Three point five, page number forty-seven of your agenda. An animal control officer having received any complaint or conducting follow-up to a previous complaint may enter onto a property excluding a private dwelling. For the purpose of inspecting, for compliance with this bylaw. Or for the purpose of seizing or impounding an animal. Now, I realize that you did use the word and I'll mention that again, bona fide, however. To me, and, and maybe this is my way of looking at it, we're. I'm unhappy with that wording. I think that we can create a tool where. Counselor Gerlock doesn't like Counselor Cromwell and he doesn't like Counselor Cromwell's dog and he's going to put in. Multiple complaints and, and this landowner, this rate payer is going to get visit after visit after visit of our CPO. Or multiple CPOs up until such time that these complaints are one. Eight, we, we're not going to entertain this anymore, but we're, we're making an issue here because one. We can use this as a weapon between ratepayers, between, uh, different parties. And two, you know. Should there ever actually be an issue? Well, now we've had fifteen complaints that are non-existent, fifteen times where we've taken away that civil liberty and. Encroached onto their property. I think we need to, to work on that section a bit better. Um. Cause it, it does frighten me a little bit. And I think there's. Is a difference between. You know, a fire permit and a dog permit, and I think that's discussion per later on in our meeting. I just. I made that note before our. Our guests here were speaking that I. I do have some issue with that myself.
So, okay, so you didn't actually have a question, more of a comment?
I'll use my question when we get into robust discussion later.
All right. Does anyone else have any, uh, questions? Of staff? Um. Sure. Please go, please come, please come to the mic though, please.
I should, sorry, asking, asked me what a working dog. How do you find a dog that's retired, a working dog that's retired, kept in a pen, but it's no longer working? Just, just a thought.
Absolutely, yeah. Something for us to consider for sure. Thank you. And we have, uh, Richard Nolan who would also like to, uh, add a comment or a question? I believe you're still on mute. One moment, please. I think we might having a few technical difficulties.
All right.
Oh, there you are.
You can hear me now?
Yes, sir.
So. One question was, like I mentioned before about how scars is overwhelmed, overflowed, they don't have room for any more dogs. So people like me. We foster dogs. They're not permanent. They're just with us until they get rehomed. Uh, does this count towards the number? Because the intention isn't that they're permanent dogs. It's a temporary space until someone adopts, which frankly, adoptions are very slow.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a question that we'll have to, um. Take into consideration. Um, I don't remember seeing the wording for, uh, foster dogs and, and temporary, but. If you.
Uh, Madam Chair, this reads section six two six, the owner has written, so this would speak to, um. Notwithstanding the premises shall not be subject to limits noted in section six point one. Uh, six point two point six, the owner has written approval from the county and is in a documented partnership with an animal rescue, animal shelter. Or licensed veterinarian clinic for the purposes of temporary fostering an animal. So written documentation is this confirmation from the shelter, the foster, so Scar sends. The county email, there's our written documentation that you're in a partnership and now. We don't require over limit permits for that fostering.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. We are kind of going a little bit outside of how the public hearing rolls, but go ahead, please, uh, Harley, if you'd like to come forward.
If you could please add to your mic. Thank you. I would just like to expand on Richard's question. Um, I have been associated with different rescues before, previously barks. Quite often I take in animals that just come off the street. Like I said, people will bring them to the detachment and no one will take them. I'll take them home. I'm not necessarily a registered foster, anything like that. So I'm wondering how that would apply to people like me. And others like me, for example, um, it is. June, end of June, I have taken in nine dogs so far and found placements for them luckily. Um, but that's nine dogs that we would be looking at euthanization or. Housing somewhere on people's tax dollars. I'm just wondering for people like me, how would we go about continuing to do our part? Would I have to then engage with a rescue? Or can I just do it out of the goodness of my heart without the expectation of being penalized for it?
Right, and I think that's something that, again, we'll have that conversation. Thank you. Alrighty, I believe, I think we've heard from all of our presenters and speakers today, but, um, I will ask. Um, does anyone feel that they have not been fairly heard? Okay, great, thank you. There being no further testimony, I will close the public hearing. I further advise counsel cannot receive any further information on this matter. Thank you for attending the public hearing. I declare the public hearing closed. At ten oh nine. Thank you for taking the time, uh, to join us this morning. I was going to say we would resume our regular county council meeting, but I believe we're going to recess our council, our, our, uh. Meeting unless, hang on, we have a delegation this morning do it, pardon me, if you will check it. Ten AM. And we also have MPC that we need to carry on forward. How should we? Proceed CAO, what would be the best of, I'm assuming our delegations are here?
Yes, Madam Chair, um. Were there any, uh, members of the public waiting for the MPC meeting to get going again?
We, I don't know if he's still here on Zoom. He's not rejoining.
So maybe it's not time sensitive to, uh, perhaps counsel could reconvene MPC later. Uh, we have. A number of. Confirmed delegations that are. That are supposed to be on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So yes, we'll then, uh, carry forward then with our regular county council meeting. And thank you all for joining us. If we could take a recess for just two or three minutes until everybody has had an opportunity. Actually, we'll make it five. Good morning, everyone. We are starting a little bit late for our delegation. However, we do need a motion to go into closed. Counselor Cromwell would like to go into closed. All those in favor? And opposed? I think we have eight and O at this time. We're good to go. All right, we're reconvening this morning's June twenty sixth regular county council meeting. And we are at five point two of the agenda. We have Ms. Glenda here from Stars to provide our annual update to our council. We do have Counselor Wallach who is on Zoom today. Counselor Cromwell is just coming back. That's fantastic. I don't believe we need introductions. I think everybody is familiar with who everybody is. So anytime you're ready, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I am, if you didn't notice, I'm very excited to see you and your council again, bring you your annual update. Lots of great information and lots of things happening again at Stars. First and foremost, I'd like to start with, this year is our fortieth anniversary of serving Albertans. And I'm sure that a lot of you heard on April thirtieth that we did lose our founder, Dr. Greg Powell. So this was very devastating news for us in our fortieth anniversary when we had so many spectacular opportunities to celebrate his legacy. But I can assure you that our team has come together and is strengthened even more so to commit to carrying on his legacy of providing critical care anywhere for the next forty years for our children, our grandchildren, and those generations yet to come. So as just a brief update, you know, we did secure another ten year service agreement with Alberta Health Services for block funding now of fifteen million dollars per year. So this represents roughly about forty-four percent of our operational costs for three bases in Alberta. So now still leaving us fifty-six percent that must be fundraised. Now, this does not include administration costs or any of our education and training. It's mandatory that our crews have anywhere from one hundred and sixty to two hundred hours per year in mandatory training. As well, it does not include any of our highly specialized medical equipment that we have. We reach out to donors specifically for all of these different areas. And we have a lot of especially corporate donors that have specific areas that they like to support. So we're very, very fortunate that we have that. Of course, we have our very beloved Stars Lottery. It nets roughly eleven to eleven and a half million dollars every year. So that basically pays for one base in Alberta each year. So please know if you are a lottery supporter, when you're buying a lottery ticket, you are significantly supporting Stars in Alberta. And now I'm going to show you an update on where we're at on the municipal side of things as far as funding, like yourselves as well. So currently, we are at ninety-five percent of all of Alberta municipalities are in partnerships, rural municipalities, as well as seventy-five percent are regional leaders, which includes Athabasca County as one of our regional leaders. So this will show you those municipalities that have come on board. They have joined. Many of them have asked me to propose a graduated proposal for them so that they can reach regional leader status, meaning at least providing a minimum two dollars per capita. This shows you all of those that are regional leaders giving at that minimum two dollar per capita up to eighty-five dollars per capita and everything in between. So you can see we largely have majority of the province, including all of northeastern B C as well as regional leaders. This indicates our provincial leaders. So currently, we have nine provincial leaders who have reached cumulatively over their years of support a minimum five hundred thousand dollars or even some over a million dollars in total support over the years. Last year, we welcomed Birch Hills County with a logo unveiling event. This year, Rocky View County will be having their one million dollar logo unveiling event in July. And next year, we will have six more or four more provincial leaders that will be joining as well, and their logos will also be represented on Stars helicopters. So we have a significant amount of really wonderful municipal leaders. Here, in the red outlines indicate those municipal districts or counties that have complete regional partnerships, meaning that every town and village that lies within their boundaries is also an annual supporter of Stars along with their county or municipal district. So I will continue to work with areas throughout Athabasca County as well to reach complete regional status. So here is a fifteen year mission report for Athabasca County within your boundaries. So you can see that we cover many different areas of your county. Also included is your critical interfacility transfers from the two local hospitals that serve your residents, Boyle, as well as Athabasca Hospital. It's important to have a full picture on what is happening throughout your areas for your critical interfacility transfers at your local hospitals. Now, most of these patients will have been taken by ground ambulance to the nearest local hospital, but because it is of a critical nature, then Stars is called to intervene and get these patients to tertiary care. So this gives you a solid overview of what happens throughout Athabasca County. Five hundred and eight total missions flown. All scene calls as well as we've done some search and rescue throughout your area because we can be a key resource for RCMP to start the search because we can be out the door in eight to ten minutes while they are putting together search and rescue teams. So we can start the search for them. So we have done several search and rescue as well. So we actually use actual mission location, the landing area where in order to identify that these missions did occur within your boundaries. For twenty twenty-five, so far, six missions have been flown. Four critical interfacility transfers from the Athabasca and Boyle Hospitals, and two were scene calls from Athabasca and Atmore. This is up to May thirty first of this year. And as an update for our postal code project, again, two hundred and twenty-six total area residents flown. Now you will see in the kind of light blue outline the boundaries of Athabasca County and then have a look at all of the red dot locations outside of those blue boundaries. This represents the two hundred and twenty-six area residents that have been flown by Stars since two thousand and ten. One hundred and three of your residents were picked up in Athabasca. One hundred and twenty-three were picked up in twenty-nine other locations across two provinces, which is represented by all the red dots, including that one red dot very far away at the bottom in Manitoba. So one of your residents happened to be in Manitoba when they needed Stars. So this really is a testament to the value of our partnership. Accidents and illness can happen anywhere. And as partners, you are helping to have access to Stars for your residents twenty-four seven all across Western Canada. As I said, Stars is borderless. We are six bases across Western Canada. We currently average eleven missions per day, but I wanted to give you an insight into the day in a life of Stars crew members. So this is one particular day's missions, eighteen different dispatches. Showing you that number three, it was for a neonatal baby. And so we brought the NICU team with us and that for the specialty team, and that baby went by ground ambulance with the specialty team. We have that opportunity to bring some of the specialty teams, whether it's a cardiac team, the neonatal team, we can bring them with us for certain cases. Number six was a rollover. But as we receive further patient information, because we are a medically driven organization, so our transport physicians are in the Link Center available twenty-four seven. They are the decision makers for what is the best receiving hospital as well as what is going to be required for that patient. So they're in the background coordinating, you know, scheduling a neurosurgeon, scheduling the cardiac cath lab, all of these kind of things for a patient. So this is happening simultaneously while we are on route to that patient so that we are really saving precious time on both ends of that mission. So as we got further patient information on this particular patient, it was deemed not medically required. Stars is the dedicated critical care provider, so it must be of a critical situation for Stars to be launched. And so we were turned around again. We were launched, and as they received further patient information, we were turned around to be ready for the next critical mission, and that patient went by ground ambulance. Next critical patient ended up being number seven, a workshop explosion. So once again, as we got further patient information, the transport physicians decided that it was best this patient went by fixed wing. And so again, we were turned around and that patient was coordinated to go fixed wing. Number ten was out of Grand Prairie for motor vehicle collision. But this particular patient was unable to be flown, whether it was for medical reasons, possibly respiratory distress. It may have been a bariatric patient where we would be unable to securely put that patient into the helicopter. So our team went with this critical patient by ground ambulance. Our team can go on all modes of transport with a critical patient, so fixed wing, ground ambulance, and Stars. Just to give you a good insight, currently, we have now surpassed sixty-five thousand missions flown since our inception in nineteen eighty-five. And last year, we flew almost four thousand missions last fiscal year. So there is a brand new medication for hemorrhage control as well. We continue to be a leader in innovation throughout the world. We were the very first in North America to bring on board life-saving blood on board. This is more than a decade ago now. We've been carrying two units of universal blood on board. In the last few years, we've seen so many extreme trauma cases where these patients are at very high risk of bleeding out. So we have increased carrying four units of universal blood on board. And now with this new medication being approved in Alberta, it's called Vibrinogen. This is a medication that actually helps these types of high-risk patients to build blood clots. So after we apply the first two units of blood, then we are able to give them the Vibrinogen, the for hemorrhage control. And then while we're on route to tertiary care, we can apply the second two units of blood that we are carrying. So this is significantly a game changer. And it's really important that we recognize it's a game changer for areas like yourselves where you are at very high remote areas, long distances, where these types of patients wouldn't have had a chance. And now we have increased that again. It's a game changer. And of course, then Stars is much more than rapid transport. We are also now providing virtual care consultation, and I can confirm we have done this with Athabasca Hospital so far as well with your medical professionals. So this is an opportunity, if we may be out on another mission, not be able to respond physically does not mean that we cannot provide this critical care virtually for your local medical professionals. So it's a secure link. They can show us on either a laptop or on a cell phone and actually show our transport physicians the medical condition of this patient. Our physicians can actually guide your medical professionals in procedural guidance as well, maybe to intubate a patient if need be. These types of things that we do every day that your local medical professionals do not see every day. So this is another heightened way of providing critical care to rural areas and rural local medical practitioners. Of course, after forty years in Stars history, we flew our longest mission in forty years. It was for a hunter in the northernmost regions of B C. It was happened at dusk, where we are able to fly at night. And he had suffered a major heart attack on a riverbank at dusk. Stars Grand Prairie was literally Doug McTavish's only hope for survival. So our Link Center, once again, they coordinated all the different areas where we could refuel. So we were fueled from at Fort Nelson from Grand Prairie. Then we went flew to Chi House, searching the riverbank in the dark for this critical patient, landed right on the riverbank, was able to stabilize this patient, get him ready for the long trek back to Grand Prairie. We flew to Watson Lake with him, refueled, flew back to Fort Nelson for a top-up in order to make that long trek back to Grand Prairie. Our transport physicians coordinated fixed wing. So as soon as we landed at the Grand Prairie Airport, he was transferred to fixed wing, which went directly to the cardiac cath lab in Edmonton that was waiting for him. More than twenty-four hundred liters of fuel was used, more than seventeen hundred kilometers flown. Eight point two total flight hours, but more importantly, more than five hours managing a severely critical patient in the air and one life saved. We had a very emotional, tearful reunion with him and his family and the Grand Prairie crew that saved his life. And this really is a testament to our mandate now to provide critical care anywhere. So in closing, thank you again, Athabasca County. We celebrate you as a regional leader. Thank you for moving to a regional leader status at a secure fixed rate of support each year in your budget. We appreciate that so much. Thank you for the standing motion, meaning that we are a line item now each year in your budget. That gives us that sustainability that we can count on as we, the mission continues to increase. You know, the mission volume and the demand continues to increase each year. Fuel, fuel costs are rising. You know, medical supply costs are rising. It's really significantly important that we know what we can count on each year. Your residents are served by two Stars bases, Edmonton and Grand Prairie. We are providing physical response and virtual response now for your local hospitals. Together, we really are enhancing critical care in the rural areas. And your residents have access to Stars twenty-four seven all across Western Canada. Forty years, we celebrate the fact that we have always remained forty years a charitable model. No cost to the patient, and that has not been possible. We wouldn't be here today without partnership like you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this really important presentation. The stats that you provided are unbelievable, and I just keep thinking to myself, the technology that we're seeing has really expanded the ability for your team to really give us that that care that you're referring to, that critical care. It just blows my mind to go from virtual as well, which is absolutely amazing and welcomed for sure. Yeah, the work that you do is extremely important, and I'd like to thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Grodd.
You said the funding from the province is over ten years?
Yes, it started last year.
So what roughly would be kind of the rate of inflation in that, in this? I know it differs, it differs from the everyday inflation rate in these things that are advancing rapidly. The inflation rate is much, much higher. Is there kind of a ballpark figure what inflation rate would be?
No, that I could not say. It is block funding, so it's funding that we know at least that we can count on. We have left the door open, if you will, for further discussions if we need to ask for incremental increase over those, that ten years. So that's always an opportunity to continue to engage with Alberta Health Services, who, you know, we must recognize is our largest funding partner. you know, we must recognize is our largest funding partner.
Okay, I have a second question, but I can't think of it right now. It'll come back to me.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Chamstick, then Counselor Hall.
I'm sorry, I was just really curious about the Fibrinogen. When was that started within STARS, within this last year?
Yes, it was approved for Alberta last year. It actually started the year before that in Saskatchewan. And it was approved by Saskatchewan Health and then a year later, and so we've been using it there. And then a year later, it was approved here for Alberta.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. And our ground crews, also HS ground crews and stuff also using it as well.
As far as I know, I do not believe that they are able to carry Fibrinogen.
Well, and I just want to say once again, thanks for everything that you do. That virtual checkup is going to be huge and, you know, thanks for all the great work.
Absolutely.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you. It's always good to see you. And so two, two thoughts. One, I want to point out that the rise or the steady climb of the interfacility transfers, at least in the west of the county, and what that looks like, like they're very, very close to the Alberta Health Services sort of minimum thresholds relates to helipads. And this is without having a helipad. And that the Boyle Hospitals numbers are low, but we need to remember the hospital's been principally closed half the time. It's not taking emergent care in the same way. Like there's, there's, uh, there are things going on in the background that the numbers don't show, I think, around the transfers at Boyle. And when I hear about all the good work that, that happens, I'm always still surprised there's any resistance to getting helipads closer, faster, to get patients evacuated more quickly. So I'm really excited that you share this with us and wonder, are there any other municipalities within our boundary that are supporters of STARS? Like are, within the boundaries of Athabasca County, does anybody else provide funding to start?
Okay. Good question. Thank you. No, currently, no. I had the opportunity to work with town of Athabasca, but decided on to hold off because we were in lots of discussions with them in hopes of getting a helipad, which I felt was much more beneficial, not only to the county, but to Athabasca itself, to have a helipad there. You know, we continue to, to want to strive and work closely with you and the town if we can, that, that's much, much more of a need in order to serve not only your county, but all of your neighbors as well, where that is a receiving hospital, you know, for area events. So definitely, I had made a presentation previously to yourselves as well, as well as Athabasca Rotary and the fact of really trying to focus together on how to achieve a helipad at the Athabasca Hospital. So we're still continuing to be hopeful. And, and you're correct that the statistics I show you are specific to STARS landings only. So does not include any other kind of ground ambulance transfers or those that STARS may have been initially going to be coming and then, you know, things were changed, whether it went by fixed wing or so that, that only includes STARS landings for those specific missions that I showed you. So we, we are hopeful that all of you together as leaders will help us to achieve the fact that, you know, in this day and age now, it's really important to have that opportunity to have helipads at the local hospitals. It really does benefit critical patients, less movements and transfers of critical patients that, for their own safety as well and survival. It really changes the scope of like not requiring your other resources and tying them up by having to transfer from the hospital. You know, we have to utilize a lot of your other resources as well, where we're a helipad and it's just directly to the hospital, take the patient, right? Landing in a co-located area with your medical professionals, like there's just so many advantages to having a helipad.
And finally, there's an opportunity, um, once a year where the summer villages get together every year in May and, and they have occasionally invited speakers in to, or someone in to speak about regional concerns. And so there may be a good opportunity to speak to all the summer villages at once annually in May, if, if that can, can get you on that invite list.
Interestingly enough that you said that, because last Saturday, I was asked to speak to the summer villages of Lac Saint-Anne County. So I spoke with all of them and one of their counselors is actually on the Alberta wide villages and they're looking to see whether or not, I believe their conference was full this year, but looking to see that they would put me on the schedule for next year, that I could speak to all of them and hopefully they would, 51 of them.
September in city.
So I'm very hopeful for that because I think that is a great opportunity.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Last year, we had an event in Boyle. We had a young man who essentially got stepped on by a bull and STARS landed right at our event and transported into the city. And I've reflected a lot in the last year on not only how fast STARS was at getting there, how great the care team was, but also how I can't imagine with his injuries, having had to ground transport him and the incredible pain and everything that that would have put him in. So I just think that STARS is such an incredible asset to our community. And we were only a kilometer away from the hospital, but the hospital, of course, was not taking patients at that time. So the fact that STARS was able to serve us and were able to land at location and get him expedited to the city was incredible. And thank you very much for having STARS serve our community.
Thank you. It, it's really important. The one thing that, that I hope everyone really understands is that critical care begins as soon as we reach the patient. We are bringing the intensive care unit environment. We are bringing the really highly specialized equipment. We, we carry all of the major pain management drugs. We have the critical expertise that is world renowned. Like there's all these different incremental things that put together. We're an anomaly in the world that we have this and we've had it for 40 years because of partnership. Like you, you just can't, you can't put a price on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Gerlach.
I remember the other question I wanted to ask.
Okay.
Does the STARS lottery generally sell out?
Yes, we've been very fortunate that we have a very well-respected lottery across Canada and we have had a sellout, yes, many years.
Yeah, because I was always considering the fact, is you give 50% of it back to the, to the winners of the prize. And so I was trying to determine, I, when I buy a ticket, I really don't want to win. But is, I just feel maybe I'd be better off just making a contribution so that you keep 100% of it.
Well, I'm not sure where you got the 50% of the...
Oh, I thought most lotteries were 50%.
I, I don't have a number, but I am sure it's not that we have a lot of dedicated annual supporters of the lottery specifically, you know? So a lot of our, the homes are well-supported by the builders that did it, you know? So we have lots of different sponsorships that, and the prizes that are at a very reduced cost that are provided for us. So we are one of the top lotteries in Canada.
Good, that's good. Watching TV and, and seeing this, some of the commercials for buying stocks, they buy a, a $5 stock and the person then is an investor, owner of the company. That's almost the way it is with the municipality. We're throwing in a couple bucks and we own part of this big company or we're, we're part of it. It's, it's something.
Right. Well, many, many of our municipalities, especially our big provincial leaders that are represented on the helicopter, some of them, they have made some, well, several of them have made significant commitments of like $200,000 or more every year. They've actually added us into their protective services budget. So that way then they are recognized what we do for their residents as part of the emergency protective services that they provide. So that allows them to increase that budget and, and be a mainstay for STARS.
That's fantastic. I, I thank you for that. That's really good information as well. Is anybody else, does anybody else have any further questions or comments they would like to make, other than donate, donate, donate? Yeah. Again, thank you, Glenda, for being here today. We so appreciate the, every time you come and, and the, the good news that you bring as well. Um, it's, it's heartwarming.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Well, I did bring your 40th anniversary calendar and a set for your fire department. Please pass this on because we can't do what we do best without them. And the latest newsletter, but please take a look if you can at the middle story. This is about Kelly Waldron, who was our very first STARS patient ever flown. And she was a neo-critical, critical neonatal baby at the time. So that's kicked it all off to begin with, right? December 1st, 1985. And then we were able to celebrate with her and Dr. Powell. One of the new fleet is actually named after her. The call sign is after her as well. And she is now a mother and, you know, there's 40 years of history there, all in one story.
Oh, that's fantastic. Thank you very much. We'll be sure to have a look at that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it again, once again, for you to be here. I know that we have another delegation right after you, so we'll just take a couple minute recesses, a recess so that we can say goodbye and bring our new delegation in. And thank you again. We appreciate the great work.
Thank you. Always great to see you.
Alrighty. Well, welcome back everybody. I think we're now at the bulk of our agenda here at item six point one, page twenty-seven of your package. And I believe this was one that Counselor Hall asked to add to. Oh, was it Councilors? I'm sorry. I thought it was the other way around. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. I added this to the agenda because I don't believe that the recommended motion is valid. And so I'd like to move to reconsider resolution CC twenty-five two ninety-nine. So that the amendment could be made as part of a new motion.
Well, actually, the reconsideration for uh, CC two-five-two-nine-nine failed. And when that happens, um, according to Robert's Rules of Order, as mentioned in section thirty-five and thirty-seven point seven. That a amend something previously adopted can be completed. And because our procedural bylaw, when it's not mentioned in our procedural bylaw, we refer to Robert's Rules of Order.
I think our procedural bylaw is relatively clear. That to amend a motion really is to, you know, put on the table a discussion of the main motion or changes that would materially impact the main motion. And amendments always happen before the main motion. And so if you double check section fourteen of the procedural bylaw, amendments are before the main. And once the main is decided, the item under consideration is really a decided item. And if we want to follow our procedural bylaw and consider the proposal, I think a motion for reconsideration is actually required under thirteen point five. Which states that there can be no discussion on a question that has been decided or permitted until a motion for reconsideration is carried. And really what we're trying to do is amend something that has already been decided. Um, it is, well, that proposal was on the table last meeting to reconsider it and that was defeated. The time to open it up and amend it would have been to approve the reconsideration. And then make those amendments at that time. And then further, the bylaw says we can only offer reconsideration once in a calendar year. So quite simply, the fact is procedural bylaw does not permit consideration of this item. The time to have made it was at the June tenth meeting.
Well, in actuality, when you're referring to the amendment that you're referring to is for a question that's on the floor. Um, this uh, would we then revert to Robert's Rules of Order, uh, Robert's Rules of Order? And it does mention amend something previously adopted. Previously adopted, amending something previously adopted is something minimal, whether it be a word or in this case, a date. Um, it's not.
Roberts only applies if our procedural bylaws vague on it. And in this case, the procedural bylaw is pretty clear.
I, I disagree. Um, uh, once again, your amendment that you're referring to is for something that is a motion that's currently on the floor. That is being amended. This uh, particular motion passed, uh, the reconsideration failed. And when the reconsideration failed, we're able to then look at amending something previously adopted. In which case, this is what this particular uh, RFD is for. Um, the recommendation here is to amend the date in resolution CC two-five-two-nine-nine. Which is a past resolution from uh, by May thirty-first to by June thirtieth. It's simply a date change.
It, it still simply does not meet thirteen point five of our procedural bylaw.
Uh, I disagree. Okay, the appeals is noted. We will vote on the appeal. So therefore to, let me see how we word this properly, to uphold the decision of the chair to go forward. With the recommendation, recommended motion. We will go to vote. All those in favor? The motion, the recommended motion is to amend the date in resolution CC two-five dash two-nine-nine. From by May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to.
Pardon me, I'm, I'm wondering if, just so I can be clear on what the, the, the appeal motion reads.
The appealed motion? I guess you're appealing the recommended motion.
No, I'm appealing the decision of the chair to ignore the procedural bylaw.
Uh, it's not an ignoring of the procedural bylaw. It's outside of the procedural bylaw, which refers to Robert's Rules of Order. So if this is what you're wanting to appeal, the decision of the chair is to refer to Robert's Rules of Order. When it doesn't apply in our particular procedural bylaw. Then we can go forward to uphold the decision of the chair to refer to Robert's Rules of Order. So, in that case, um, is there anybody who would like to put this motion forward?
I would appeal the decision of the chair on that item.
Okay, the appeals is noted. We will vote on the appeal. So therefore to, let me see how we word this properly, to uphold the decision of the chair to go forward. With the recommendation, recommended motion. We will go to vote. All those in favor? The motion, the recommended motion is to amend the date in resolution CC two-five dash two-nine-nine. From by May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to.
Pardon me, I'm, I'm wondering if, just so I can be clear on what the, the, the appeal motion reads.
The appealed motion? I guess you're appealing the recommended motion.
No, I'm appealing the decision of the chair to ignore the procedural bylaw.
Uh, it's not an ignoring of the procedural bylaw. It's outside of the procedural bylaw, which refers to Robert's Rules of Order. So if this is what you're wanting to appeal, the decision of the chair is to refer to Robert's Rules of Order. When it doesn't apply in our particular procedural bylaw. Then we can go forward to uphold the decision of the chair to refer to Robert's Rules of Order. Is that what, satisfying? Okay. Which is what has been mentioned in this particular RFD?
I'd like a recorded vote, please.
Thank you. Was that what you were looking for? Okay. All right. So to uphold the decision of the chair to follow Robert's Rules of Order. Um, in this particular instance, we will go to vote. All those in favor? It's a recorded vote. We have Counselor Cromwell, Counselor Gerlock, Counselor Minz, Counselor Holland and Counselor Chamsik and those opposed. We have Counselor Wallach, Counselor Anderson, Counselor Hall and Counselor Capitan. Is there anyone who'd like to put the motion forward to amend the date in resolution CC two-five-two-nine-nine? From by May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Who moved?
Thank you.
Excuse me Chair, I had requested to make a motion to reconsider.
That motion to reconsider had failed?
Wasn't voted on.
The, the last reconsideration that we did here with regards to the amending CC two-five-two-nine-nine failed.
Sorry, I'm a little bit confused. There was cross talk across the table. From my understanding, Counselor House's motion is still on the floor. We jumped ahead when Counselor Hall uh, went to go appeal your decision.
Yes.
But there's still, as far as I can tell, it's still a motion on the floor.
Right. And then the motion, though, I don't believe is valid because the, the motion was to reconsider, uh, believe CC two-five-two-nine-nine. Which was done in the previous agenda, our previous ca- uh, meeting and it failed.
Okay, that's what the appeal was all about, I think.
Okay. So, Counselor Cromwell's uh, motion now is to amend the date in resolution CC two-five-two-nine-nine. From by May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. If everyone's ready for that vote.
Record it, please.
As a discussion, can we just be clear? If reconsideration has failed, how are we returning to the ma- main motion?
Once again, we've been, we've discussed it. Uh, Robert's Rules of Order allows an amend, to amend something previously adopted. It is in section thirty-five as well as thirty-seven point seven. When a reconsideration of that motion has failed, it reverts back to as if that motion didn't exist. So therefore, or the reconsideration motion didn't exist. So therefore, we're able to go forward to amend something that was previously adopted in a minor way, which is a date. All right. So if we're ready, because we can go around and around the, the table at this, so I think we're ready for the vote. Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I'd just like to state that I'm still opposed to the motion. Because it violates our policy. And I believe that we should have revised the policy, not just made a motion that goes against it.
And thank you. That motion that did pass, as you mentioned, that, that policy sixty-eight oh five. Will be coming back to a future committee of the whole for discussion and amendment. And if we're ready for the vote at this point, I don't think there's any further discussion, just checking the screen. All right. On the motion to amend, Counselor Cromwell's motion to amend the date in resolution CC two-five-two-nine-nine. From by May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. And that was a recorded vote, I believe. So Counselor Cromwell. Counselor Gerlock, Counselor Minz, Counselor Holland, Counselor Chamsik and Counselor Hall. All those opposed? Counselor Wallach, Counselor Anderson and Counselor Capitan. Thank you. The next item we have is item six point three. Um, which is on page thirty-four. I believe. Thirty-four, there we go. There it is. Highway two, uh, condition concern letter. Um, and this is a recommendation here is to direct administration to draft a letter for the Reeves signature regarding the current condition of highway two from Athabasca to Clyde and send it to the Minister of Transportation. Is it, Counselor Minz, would you like to own that motion? Already, is there a discussion? Go ahead, please Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. Just so that it is on record, uh, highway two is in much better shape than highway sixty-three. Just saying.
Thank you. Counselor Hall?
I asked to have this added to the agenda. Um, so I guess because I wasn't permitted to make the motion, I would like to propose an amendment. To include a mention of the condition of highway eight thirteen and eight twenty-seven while we're writing. If we're sending a letter regarding the condition of highways in the county, we should mention other ones that are in worse condition. The fact is really that highway two from Athabasca to about Perry Vale is in relatively good condition and was recently repaved. Um, so I don't know if we're now in the business of writing to ministers about the, the uh, condition of highways that are primarily in other counties. But I think it would be nice at least to mention some highways that are in worse condition inside our boundaries. So I would make the amendment to include highways eight thirteen and eight twenty-seven.
Thank you. Um, and if I just may, eight thirteen is on the radar already. If you have a look at Alberta Transportation's projects, eight thirteen is already there and I'm not sure it's in the design if I'm not mistaken. The last time I checked, uh, which was a couple of days ago. So I'm not sure that eight thirteen is necessary. We can definitely add it, but they are already uh, going forward with um, thirty-five kilometers, I believe it is pavement for that one. Um, Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you. Though I appreciate the member Cross's uh, commitment to those other roads. I, I do recall that there was conversation about the need to make things very clear. And if we're adding another two roads, then we're going to add another one or two more. Takes away from the weight of that letter. If we want to do another bit of uh, information to the Minister of Transportation afterward, fantastic. However, this was about highway two. Let's not muddy the waters. Let's not make things more difficult, more convoluted than they require to be. And keep it at highway two. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Capitan. You can then Counselor Wallach?
Um, I'm just opposed to sending the letter at all. I think that um, we have enough face-to-face communication with ministers and all of the events and conferences and meetings that we have. That we likely have already spoken to these highways and/or will continue to lobby for them in the future. Um, and it's not just about the highways. It will be, it's about bridges. It is about um, uh, infrastructure that is important for all our corridors. But to be um, I want to say a gnat in someone's ear is not always positive. It doesn't always get you the best results. And I think that we should be a lot more pinpointed and focused on what we lobby transportation for. Instead of just sending a letter at the whim of every thought that crosses this table. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and just in a follow-up um, to that, um, the letter that came forward uh, to us uh, from our resident, in, in my personal opinion, and as mentioned in our last meeting. We are advocates for our residents and I personally believe it's extremely important when they take the time to write to us and ask us for that, for help. Um, and of course, it's again up to council. Uh, but my personal opinion is that we do what we can uh, to help our residents. So I'm very much in support of sending that letter. Um, is there anyone who'd like to speak with Counselor Chamsik on the amendment? Oh, pardon me. Yes, I, I apologize. Thank you, Counselor Wallach.
Thanks. I, I do agree with uh, Counselor Capitan. We need to be focused on our efforts. But if we are going to be adding in a letter that's not in our county, I would advocate for eight thirteen north of thirty-five kilometers. If anybody's driven to calling like, it is terrible.
Thank you. Counselor Minz? Oh, oh, Counselor Chamsik?
That's all right. It happens. Well, and I mean, and I do agree with, uh, you know, we do have a lot of opportunity to meet with ministers and whatnot. But I also am a big fan of squeaky wheel gets grease. And I mean, while we have these opportunities, I mean, we have these highways, um, in my opinion, to lump them together is not beneficial and it's not going to get the messaging across. Um, you know, I think it'd be great as council is if we picked those priority highways and wrote letters. I mean, as administration writes the letters anyways, I don't think it's much more than a signature and discussion on any other part.
Thank you. Counselor Minz?
Yeah, just regarding the amendment and that, we're, we're advocating for uh, for our rate pair that uh, that brought this forward and when we're advocating over a, a section of highway that uh, that is actually in Athabasca County from Prairieville to uh, south of Rochester. So I don't uh, see why we can't send a letter on behalf of the county on behalf of the uh, rate pair. Um, I don't see the big problem here. And if you want to advocate for another highway, go ahead and advocate for it. But ask Counselor Cromwell to keep this, keep it separate. Don't, don't muddy the water. Me is just put, we'd like to see all the highways in Athabasca County paved. And, and, but that's not what this letter is saying. It's saying uh, to look at highway two. I, I was driving down the highway last weekend that uh, that was very rough and that too. And it was outside of our county and, and I think it should be paved too. But it's like, we have somebody that, that has actually wrote a letter into Athabasca County and, and asking for council support. And I can't see the problem with it. We're not standing in front of the minister nattering in his ear. We're actually just sending them a letter stating what, what our uh, uh, rate pairs are looking at. And uh, to muddy it with every highway. It goes nowhere.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion and we're ready to vote on the amendment, last chance. Already, on the amendment uh, to include highways eight thirteen and eight twenty-seven. That's Counselor Hall's amendment. All those in favor?
I.
Three and opposed. Six, amendment fails. And on the main measure, motion, which I believe was Deputy Reeve Minz to direct administration to draft a letter, letter for the Reeves signature regarding the current condition of highway two from Athabasca to Clyde and send it to the Minister of Transportation. There's no further discussion. All those in favor? Two, three, four, five and opposed. One, two, three.
Day.
Four, five and four. Thank you. Alrighty, we're moving into item seven point one, page forty of your agenda package. This is the animal control bylaw, uh, zero-one-zero-twenty-twenty-five from the public hearing this morning. I'm going to uh, ask if if staff, if, if the director or the chief would like to weigh in here on this report?
Um, administration uh, uh, recommends that council passes this bylaw as presented.
Alrighty. So from discussion this morning, um, we've heard of uh, from four, uh, four? I said four and two, three, four, five. Um, rate pairs on their concerns. Or no, it was four. Four or five. All right. But um, is there a discussion with regards to the public hearing this morning that anybody needs clarification on? That we didn't receive? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Through the Chair to Administration, um, can you please confirm that there's no fee for an over limit permit included in this copy of the bylaw we're reviewing?
Through the Chair to Counsel Anderson, that is correct. There is no fee for an over limit permit. Um, the confusion might be about a fine, fine amount for non-compliance, but there is no fee for the actual permit.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wasn't able to find it when we were going through. Counselor Hall?
Uh, through the Chair to Administration, uh, can you clarify the MG, that the MGA um, permits the county to enter lands within the county in a wide variety of circumstance? Both for assessment, for uh, building inspections, et cetera. Like I, because, because we heard there was a great deal of concern about, you know, people that are showing up. But I, I think that's something that probably already exists in the provincial legislation. This isn't something that's been cooked up by the county.
Was sorry, is there a question there that needs?
Yeah, the question was, can you confirm that that is in the MGA?
If you want.
Madam Chair, um, unless I'm mistaken, this draft received legal review by our solicitor and twice. And uh, agreed with our final wording.
Hey, thank you, Counsel Chamsik and then Counsel Anderson and then Counselor Cromwell.
I just had a question on uh, is there a need for clarification between working dog and uh, the uh, guardian dogs?
We had a lot of discussion and research in that uh, avenue. And um, because it, you know, what, what we define as working and what uh, other people define as working, isn't necessarily the same thing. Uh, we felt that the over limit permit allows for us to assess those situations and every situation is going to be different.
Thank you. I believe it was Counsel Anderson, then Cromwell and then Counselor Capitan.
Thank you. Sorry, as a follow-up, I wasn't able to see anywhere in here where the permit expires. For the over limit permit. Um, is it an annual permit that they would have to receive? Or is it kind of like a development permit where you apply for it and then it's um, valid unless a situation occurs where it would be revoked?
Through the Chair to Counsel Anderson, it was our intent to have it as a uh, similar other permits we have where they're recurrent, where we don't actually have to reapply. It's a one-time application unless it's rescinded.
Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you. Uh, I know that member across me asked about the legality or in the MGA. And I know that uh, we were just told it was reviewed by legal counsel. However, can you please inform me, and I apologize that I cannot find it. Under what uh, section of the law do we have the right to enter into their buildings for the purpose of inspection? Without warrant. And under three point five of your bylaw on page forty-seven. Uh, excluding a private dwelling. So we're, we're per bylaw saying that we can enter your shed, your quonset, your garage. Your barn, all of your outbuildings for the purpose of doing our inspection by our bylaw and CPO uh, member.
As a point of order.
Point of order has been called, please, sorry.
But I'm sure, I think just for clarity on three point five, it talks about. Never mind. Sorry, I withdraw.
Um, I will say though, it is excluding any private dwelling for the purpose of inspecting uh, for compliance with this bylaw. But are you referring to other outbuildings?
As I was stating, yes, you have your garages, your barns, your sheds, your quonset. Your multitude of structures on a farm property, on an acreage property. What piece of legislation and law allowed us without warrant to enter for the purpose of inspecting for compliance? In addition to seizing of an animal?
As the CAO spoke to earlier, um, we had extensive legal review on this. Um, bylaw.
Follow-up. Would we be able to get that piece of legislation, please, that tells us that is what piece of law allows us to do that? I realize it has been looked at by the legal counsel apparently twice. However, people do miss things. There are things that are overlooked. I would like to know what piece of legislation allows us without warrant to do that for the purpose of inspecting for compliance with this bylaw?
Um, being that I, again, it's been mentioned um, through legal, right? Um, and it's been vetted through legal, uh, uh,
Um, being that again, it's been mentioned, um, through legal, right? Um, and it's been vetted through legal, uh, a couple of times. My question then maybe to Councilor Cromwell, would you like to see an amendment to three point five that says excluding any private dwelling and outbuildings?
I understand how parts of this are worded. For the purpose of seizing or impounding an animal. Now that will tell me that Mr. Cromwell has a dog and that dog is a naughty dog. And that naughty dog has caused issue. And as such, the county staff have to come by in and deal with Mr. Cromwell's naughty dog. I understand that completely. I understand that Mr. Cromwell might want to hide his naughty dog from the county forces because the family loves Mr. Cromwell's naughty dog. However, for the purpose of inspecting for compliance? That, to me, that sounds like, that would be like the federal government going, hey, I want to be able to have any, any police officer, anybody come and say, hey, I want to go through everything you have in your phone just to make sure you're not being naughty. I find that incredibly inappropriate. I find that incredibly dangerous. And I find the wording in three point five on that bylaw to be vastly inappropriate. And I'm not sure yet how the change in that wording needs to go. But irregardless of the fact that we were told it was seen by legal, I would like legal to review that three point five with the concerns noted here in this room and get an opinion back before we proceed with what could be a grievous violation of people's rights. There's a huge difference in for the purpose of seizing or impounding a dangerous animal and for the purpose of inspecting for compliance with this bylaw.
Okay, um, I think.
Madam Chair, section five, four, two, uh, subsection one of the MGA is titled municipal inspections and enforcement. It reads as follows. If this or any other enactment or a bylaw authorizes or requires anything to be inspected, remedied, enforced, or done by a municipality, the designated officer of the municipality may, after giving reasonable own, uh, notice to the owner or occupier of the land or the structure to be entered to carry out the inspection, remedy, enforcement, or action, comma, subsection A, enter on that land or structure at any reasonable time and carry out the inspection, enforcement, or action authorized or required by the enactment or bylaw. Subsection B, request anything to be produced to assist, assist in the inspection, remedy, enforcement, or action. And subsection C, make com, copies of anything related to the inspection, remedy, enforcement, or action. Uh, sec, subsection one point one states a consent signed under section six, five, three is deemed to be reasonable notice for the purpose of subsection one. Uh, subsection two says the designated officer must display or produce on request identification showing that the person is authorized to make the entry. Subsection three, in an emergency or in extraordinary circumstances, the designated officer need not give reasonable notice or enter at a reasonable hour and may do the things in subsection one, A and C without the consent of the owner or occupant. Subsection four, nothing in this section authorized municipality to remedy the convention, uh, the contravention of an enactment or bylaw.
Thank you. Counselor, okay. Would you like to weigh in here? And I see that Counselor Wallach, I just want to make sure that I see, you know that I see you and Counselor Capitani is after Counselor Cromwell. However, I think Chief Shalapai would like to respond to Counselor Cromwell.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make one more, uh, comment on here as well. I know we're talking about impounding naughty dogs. But if you look at section fifteen, where we have the basic care requirements for an animal, if we do receive a complaint regarding animal welfare and animal distress, malnourished, without the ability to go in and do the inspection, we're unable to actually take care of fifteen.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, um, and you're after Counselor Wallach, uh, Counselor Capit, or do you want to follow up, Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you, I would. Uh, in reading five, four, sub one by the CAO and which I will read again, did this or any other enactment or a bylaw authorize it or requires anything to be inspected, remedied, remedied, enforced, or done by municipality, a designated officer of the municipality may, after giving reasonable, oh, notice to the owner or occupier of the land or structure to be entered, carry out the inspection, remedy, enforcement, or action. Uh, where in this bylaw then does it give a a notice period as required in the MGA?
I, I believe that the MGA definitely, um, trumps the bylaw. So, um, it would, just, I'm just speaking off the top of my head here, just in thought. But I would think that if there is notice to be given, the MG and the MGA specifies that, that would have to be followed by the enforcement officers. Um, does it need to be specified in the bylaw?
Uh, Madam Chair, that's correct. If we're conducting an investigation, we're making contact, we're making, uh, a, a, again, all the requirements to comply with the MGA to go in and, and do that. The only time we would use the emergency provision, and I will speak to a situation we've had in the last year where an individual was incarcerated and he had an animal. And after the animal being unattended for about a week, someone called into us saying, hey, there's an animal there. It's in distress. We're unable to get written approval and that's an emergent situation. So under the emergency provisions, we enter in there to make sure that the animal is being tended to, fed, watered, and isn't in distress. So again, it's not specifically noted in here because it depends on the situation that we're facing at the time.
Okay, thank you. Um, and again, Counselor Cromwell, by all means, if there's something that you would like to add or, uh, to the, to the bylaw, we're only at second reading. Counselor Capit, oh, yeah, Counselor Capitani, Counselor Wallach, and then Counselor Hall, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I have a statement prepared more so than a question, so bear with me. Um, I believe the people of our community have been speaking loudly that they are not happy with this bylaw or its rollout. I suggested public engagement a long time ago, and perhaps we need engagement on what engagement the public would benefit from. But if the time of day for some is not good for all, perhaps we need to budget extra admin time to acknowledge that we are here to meet the people when they're available, not when we're available. We need to let the people be involved in a way that they feel heard and respected. Um, does that look like a community-driven ad hoc committee? Perhaps to research and help create a bylaw foundation or bones? I don't know, but I do know the community is not feeling heard and respected, and that's on us as a council. I acknowledge the residents of this county, sorry, acknowledge that the residents of this county need a bylaw that protects them and their own dogs, their family, and their livestock. They need to protect themselves from problem animals. I don't believe that this is a law to do it. In its current form, it is creating fear and resentment in our community members that are not only responsible owners, but diligent in supporting the needs of our animals that would otherwise be at large or at risk of hurting others or themselves. The bylaw states registering is, is the key for responsible owners. And that will continue to be unchanged. I see this as a type of punishment for doing good. This bylaw assumes residents, specifically those who rescue or foster, as we heard speaking today, have all kinds of time, free time during their business hours to keep this office updated on the animals in their residence. How ignorant is it to demand your residents' time and energy so that we can satisfy the need to push through a bylaw as intricate and complex as this? The people want more. They want more say, and this means slow down. Take a minute and start communicating with people. Despite counselors having discussed this at length, and I respect the immense time admin has worked on this, I still feel the clear message from the people is that they want more input. And that means we need to slow down. That's all.
Thank you.
And also, I agree with Counselor Cromwell, we need to state how much time should be given.
In the bylaw?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Counselor Wallach, you're up, and then Counselor Hall.
Thank you. Um, just to clarify for the, the fostering of the dogs, six point two point six kind of speaks to that. Um, could it maybe talk about the process of how they would like this to roll out?
Um, just so everybody knows what six point two point six is, is the owner has written approval from the county and is in documented partnership with an animal rescue, animal shelter, or licensed veterinarian clinic for the purpose, purposes of temporary fostering of an animal.
As far as, uh, Counselors, Counselor Chamsik's question goes, uh, once third reading of this bylaw is passed, uh, the previous bylaw is rescinded and this bylaw is in place.
Okay, and then Counselor Wallach mentioned the fostering of animals. Um, I'm sorry, what was, what exactly was the question, Counselor Wallach? I was too busy looking for the point in the bylaw.
I guess, like, do you want the, the shelters to be emailing? So I'm just wondering, like, who's responsible for reporting?
Through, through the Chair to Counselor Wallach, for the section six, two, six, it's, we, we just need some documented evidence. So whether that's initiated by the foster owner or the kennel, we need to have some sort of, um, documentation to show that they are, uh, in a partnership with that organization.
Okay, does that satisfy Counselor Wallach?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hall.
So we've heard a number of objections in the folks that took the time to come and speak to us today. But I mean, uh, really, most of those are in a fairly consistent theme. And I've actually had zero negative feedback on this bylaw. And the, the theme of the feedback we heard today, I think the majority of those objections are actually addressed through section seven. To some degree, uh, it's my feeling that a couple of the answers probably reflected maybe a lack of understanding or a lack of having read the bylaw. Because they, the, the question was fairly basic and not directly answered. And so it, I worry that there's objections that are not founded in the basis of the bylaw. We have already heard from admin that legal counsel has been consulted, that this is lawful and reasonable. And as we get into talking about these ad hoc shelters, do we really want ad hoc shelters all over the county that do not have development permits? Like, section six point two, three talks about, um, development permits to operate, you know, among other things, but an animal boarding facility. If you're going to board animals on a regular basis, get a development permit and do it right. It isn't okay to start running, uh, uh, an ad hoc development permit or ad hoc boarding facility without getting it properly approved. We've heard many times in the past objections to this, just do it and, you know, come what may. If we want to run a boarding facility, then get a development permit to get approved to do it. So I really think most of the, the objections are addressed through section seven. We have a very reasonable administrative team and have continued to have over many years. I think they have the common sense and the discretion to handle this properly. And this is, as we all have heard for almost four years, our peace officer program is not proactive in looking for trouble. They deal with complaints and deal with issues, and this is a tool that our, the CAO's staff have asked for in order to deal with problems they're not able to adequately dealt with. And so um, I would be happy to move second reading on, on this, um, and keep moving this forward.
Thank you. Counselor Capitani, and then Counselor Wallach.
Okay, I'll just take this moment just, uh, um, through the chair reply. Every, uh, boarding facility or shelter that is considered registered and legitimate started once with someone at heart, a home and a garage, and maybe even a kiddie pool where some stray dog had a litter of puppies that they didn't know what to do with. I would like to venture that most farmers, uh, that live along highways, my late grandparents included, would be running ad hoc pet care facilities for every animal that's dropped off alongside the highway. Not everyone has a cold enough heart to put animals down consistently on their own just because of the location in which they live. And if the truth of the matter, that you want to go after people that are taking care of stray animals because they have a heart, again, where the question is, where are those animals going? Our shelters are full. This council in years past has not looked kindly upon happily handing out permits for new ones. And we should be grateful that there are community members that will take animals in. There are shelters everywhere begging for money. People, they want foster homes for dogs. People, if anything, we should be subsidizing Spain neuter clinics. Maybe that's where this needs to go. But the point is there's a lot bigger problem with people than just having a couple of dogs running loose here and there. If you start penalizing those that are taking care of them, you're going to have dogs everywhere. That or they're just going to be euthanized properly or not. And I don't want to be responsible for that.
Thank you, Counselor Wallach. Then we have Counselor Deputy Reeve Mins, and we have Counselor Cromwell.
Sorry, I just forgot to lower my hand there.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Deputy Reeve.
I don't, I don't know. I, I, I don't see anything anywhere in this bylaw that it says we're disheartening people. We're telling them, you can't do this. We asked them to get a permit to, to we asked them to get a permit. And, and if they want to have more than, than so many dogs, it's not like we're asking them to give us their firstborn. And, and, uh, so to say that we're disheartening people and, and and pushing dogs and cats or whatever it is to be euthanized, I, I do not see that in this permit. I, I don't know. I, I, I don't even understand. And if, and if it's important for you to, 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 uh, address this bylaw, you'll make time to, to come and address it. I, you know, no, it's I know, I know out in Division eight, there was a, uh, a kennel there. And this, uh, councils before us went through actual hack regarding that whole kennel thing and that. We're going through it in Division four right now. Uh, or we were prior and, and, and it's just all this permit, all, all this bylaw saying is be a reasonable pet owner. That's all it's doing. And if you're not going to be a reasonable pet owner, well, then you're going to probably see the county.
Thank you. If Counselor Chamsik after Counselor Cromwell, but if I may just quickly, um, I have a question with regards to the over limits. Um, we're not saying that someone is limited with the number of animals, but what I am seeing is there is a refuse to grant an over limit permit. Is, can you tell me what grounds that that would, um, a refusal would be given?
Uh, Madam Chair, so that'd be a tough one to explain without actually having a scenario. So that, that just gives the enforcement team an opportunity. Let's say you've got a lake lot and they've got forty large animals that that lake lot cannot substantiate. Um, we're not hand tied to saying, yes, you automatically will get it forever or automatically, but there has, has to be a certain amount of reasonability in there. Um, but that's again, a one-off exaggerated case. Like this is not something that's through the intent to the over limits.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Counselor Cromwell and then Counselor Chamsik.
Thank you. I think something very simple either added to our definitions or added as three point five point one. Uh, something pretty much along the lines of uh, unless in a documented emergency or extraordinary circumstances, the county will issue the landowner a five business day notice before entering a property for inspection.
So this would be, are you adding this as an amendment?
I am.
Okay, to the second reading. Okay. So that's for consideration. And are, are you needing any clarification? Are you, you're done with your comment that we can go to Counselor Chamsik?
Uh, again, I will leave that up to administration, whether they feel that is better served as a a note under a notice period and then a definition made under the definition or added after three point five. But something that alleviates the concern of the rate pair, that the county's not just going to show up because I'm out going for a drive and you know what, I'm going to come and check every one of your thirty-two outbuildings, your garage, your shed, your quonset and everything that's not your residential dwelling house because I want to do an inspection. So that, that safety for our rate pairs is vitally important.
Thank you. Counselor Chamsik, then Counselor, um, Anderson and Counselor.
You know, I really hate repeating myself. I don't personally have any of those concerns, but, um, you know, I don't see administration that being an issue. Um, I mean, oftentimes when we start something, um, it's always, there's got to be a starting point. We've made amendments, we've made mistakes, and we've grown and we've learned. And I mean, at this point, I mean, um, a lot of the concerns addressed with the over limit permits, I think, um, are addressed through there, in my personal opinion. Um, I, I agree with, uh, the, my, the counselor beside me here. Um, I think we have to start somewhere. And I mean, and if there is an issue, we can always bring it back to what you're saying.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Administration brought this forward at the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four Committee of the Whole Meeting. And a lot of the notes that I looked back And a lot of the notes that I looked back on that I'd taken there were that they had noted issues. They had noted concerns and recurring situations of dogs attacking people on walking trails or attacking kids getting off the school bus or not being properly contained. And they didn't feel that the current bylaw had enough teeth to actually be able to enforce on those situations and to be able to relieve those situations. I don't call in any time between then and now them saying that they want to start more proactive enforcement. That they've reiterated on multiple occasions that they want to remain complaint based, but that when a complaint is issued, they needed a bylaw where they could enforce on those issues. And I think that they've done a great job of trying to incorporate some of the concerns and issues that came apart when our neighbors in Westlock County, um, went through a very similar process. And so while I know that not everybody's going to love the bylaw or have faith that we aren't going to become eh, more proactive enforcement. Um, I do think that with the current strategies that we have in place here in Athabasca County where we are complaint based and we just need a tool to be able to enforce when there is an issue, that the current draft of the bylaw that's being proposed meets those requirements to be able to serve our community and address those issues when they're occurring.
Thank you.
Listen, I'm very much ticked off with you, Council Anderson, because I wanted to say almost that exact same thing. And I was waiting. There is no way that you're going to develop something that is perfect that answers everybody's requirements or needs. Uh, the purpose of this is to deal with people that are unreasonable. The people that were here today were very unreasonable. And the parts of the, uh, of the bylaw.
Did you mean reasonable?
Pardon?
Did you just require, did you mean they were very reasonable?
Very reasonable. And, and, oh, and I, I think it has to have the teeth in it to deal with the people that are not reasonable. Uh, I mean, there's common sense that can be applied to it, and, and there isn't anybody that's going to be going out, stopping every place and counting counting dog. If a problem does arise, uh, it arises and it can be dealt with, and you have to have a policy that has enough, uh, enough strength to it that, that you can deal with the matters. Uh, I think Council Anderson was spot on, and, uh, I think we can move forward with it with fair confidence. Because reasonable people are reasonable to deal with, and the unreasonable people, you have to have a stick, so.
All right, does anybody at Council Hall?
I think just to reinforce, we already have the ability to, to get into properties and legal counsel has reviewed this, and so I, I am of view, view should not be tweaking it. The, the proposed amendments are, are unnecessary, and I think they're covered. But also in follow-up to the comments from a colleague, I, I doubt there will be proactive enforcement. And so if you happen to be the person who has six dogs over ten acres, you know, honestly, if you manage that in a way that you don't bring it to the attention of anybody, I, I just don't see that ever coming to be a problem. Like, this is about dealing with problems, not about dealing with. No, is it possible something's happened? Is it possible it's obviously violates by law? There are so many things that until they just go along status quo, until somebody makes a problem of it, and then it becomes an issue. And we've seen that in other, other areas too. But I, I think we need to move ahead with at least second reading, and then we can discuss whether we want to pause third reading for the next meeting in order to give more time for feedback, which I don't support, because this has been on the agenda and part of the discussion since twenty twenty four. There's been lots of time for feedback.
Thank you. Alrighty, um, I think we've kind of gone around and around. Um, this is an extremely important topic. This is dealing with, um, situation where animals are family, uh, as well, and is very, um, near and dear to people's hearts. So I don't mind spending extra time, um, going through and having this conversation as well as even if there's extra time. My concern here is hearing from residents over and over and over here in the last while, when this first came out, this last while, while it's coming up on the agenda, is the misunderstanding of quite a few of the points within the bylaw. So my question then becomes, if this passes, um, what kind of education are we able to provide? In whether written form, whether it be online, something that helps explain some of the concerns that, that we've heard from, from residents. Because ultimately, that's who we're working for. We work for the residents. We understand that there is some misunderstanding with regards to the bylaw, but we need to clear that up. And I think we need to, uh, out of respect, take the time to make sure that those misunderstandings are, are handled. So I am in favor of, of, yes, we have to, of course, deal with the amendment that we have on the table of looking at second reading, but I am not in favor of moving forward, uh, on third reading until we're able to address some of the education concerns, um, that residents need to have to feel comfortable that we're doing right by them. But that's just my personal feeling. So on the amendment, Council Cromwell, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and read that again, please, because I didn't write that down.
Unless in a documented emergency or extraordinary circumstances, the county will issue the landowner five business day notice before entering a property for inspection. And as I get final word on my bit of the motion.
There's a point of order. Amendments don't get final.
Really, there isn't a final word. There, to be honest with you, if you really, if you read the bylaw, if you read the procedural bylaws, different interpretation. Go ahead, please.
Anyway, with the discussion around the table and the wording of, well, it's seen a lawyer and it's good. If, uh, if you think that there's nothing in the M G A that will contradict that and you're not worried about it, why are you keeping it out?
Well, a- again, you know, if we were to put the site, the whole M G A within our bylaws, they would be really big. Um, and so the M G A definitely does trump the bylaw. And as you've heard, enforcement already understands that there is notice that needs to be given. However, making it clear for the public when they read the bylaw is also, uh, important as well. All right, so. Are we at the stage of the amendment? And I only, I understand that it's been given to Ms. Leah to write down. So if everybody understands, go ahead.
For clarity, has somebody moved second reading and there, there's an amendment on the table? Or is this just a motion to amend the draft bylaw as presented to us?
Just an motion to amend the draft bylaw as presented to us.
Although I did move second reading.
Yes, but I didn't read it. He, he said he would like to do second reading. I didn't say we were at second reading. So, sorry, but we, I think it's important that we deal with the amendment first, and then we can go on to second reading. All right, so if that's where we're at on the motion for the amendment to bylaw zero one zero twenty twenty five, as was given to, uh, our recording secretary. All those in favor? Two and opposed? Okay, that, that amendment fails. Um, and now we're on to the second reading. Council Hall would like to move second reading, uh, that bylaw on bylaw zero one zero twenty twenty five as presented. If we're ready to go, folks, all those in favor? And opposed, at seven and two. And we are at an opportunity to move to, um, uh, third reading, third and final reading as presented for bylaw zero one zero twenty twenty five.
Madam Chair, before third reading gets moved or not moved with their, um, since we wobble around on our adherence to the rules, would we want to talk about whether we do want to have that discussion today before we actually put that on the table? Like, I know there are some views that maybe we should wait. There's some views that maybe we shouldn't. Perhaps it would benefit council to figure it out. If, if the majority are clearly ready to move ahead, then maybe we just need to keep moving.
Thank you. Um, I'll, I'll speak to that. Actually, I'm, I'm not comfortable moving forward until we have some of this education piece, um, given to our, um, residents so that they're comfortable. But that's just my personal opinion. Council Gerlock and Council Minz.
Just to, to administration, uh, having heard some of the conversations this morning, are there any changes that you would see necessary or, or anything? If you think needs to be dealt with or?
Through the Chair to Council Gerlach, um, at this time, we don't see any changes required.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm wondering, um, other than the bylaw, what, what edu- educational piece are we looking at here? Like, like, we want to, right, or what, what are we looking for for education? Because, because there's, I don't know how you rebut everything in this bylaw. I think, yeah, so I'm just wondering, what, what educational?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking anybody.
Sure, I'll help you. So what I meant by that is, um, as was brought to our, our attention this morning, um, there's quite a few residents who, this is new to them, even though it's been on our table for a year. People are still learning about it. It's a huge topic within our county and our, our residents and our community, and it's being spoken about pretty much everywhere I go, I've been asked now about the animal control bylaw. And, um, when you speak to people, they go, oh, I didn't know that. Oh, I heard that differently. So by hanging on just for, uh, uh, you know, till July, July thirty first, in my opinion, till our next meeting, it gives an opportunity for people to feel a little more comfortable with the bylaw once it's been explained to them. Now, whether or not who they contact to ask those questions is, is entirely up to them. But, uh, I found that after speaking with quite a few people, they were a little more comfortable, once they were understood it. And not having that opportunity to really sit down, not everybody goes through the bylaws and the agendas and the meetings, like, you know, and, and has that same opportunity that we have. And so it's, for me, it's just giving residents some respect of time. I know it's, it's, I, I, I hear you, uh, but, um, I just, I, there's just a lot of people. That's just my personal feeling. Go ahead, Council Chamsik and then Council Hall.
And like, like I said before, I really feel that, I mean, at some point, we've got to throw it on the table, and I, I think it's, it's right. Uh, my personal opinion, the things, the concerns I feel have been addressed, and it can come back, um, with a two-thirds, uh, vote as well. But would it suffice you, we can, can communications write something on the website or just highlighting some of those concerns?
The, oh, Council Wallack, and then Council Gerlock.
Sorry, I thought I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Hall was first. Pardon me.
So a comment was kind of made educate on what, I think I heard, and, and I had written that same idea down, like, what is it we're educating? We don't have a bylaw to educate to. So I don't think it makes sense to start trying an educational campaign on a bylaw that may or may not ever pass. And I wonder if it would be a more sensible pro- process, uh, and compromise to educate on an actual bylaw that is about to come into force. And so, you know, maybe with admin's advice, could we make the effective, uh, upon Pat, sorry, effective upon and give it a date, like perhaps September one or August one? So that if we invest money in educating people, which quite frankly, I'm not sure how much more comfortable we can do after eighteen months of this being part of the discussion, but we can continue to put a more focused effort on it, perhaps. So by, you know, would the compromise be to make it effective August one or September one? And I would have to look to the, uh, wise minds of admin to see if that is a, a reasonable choice. Then you've got the time in order to educate to something that actually is coming and something that actually exists. Because if you start educating people and then it fails third reading, what if you actually, like, now you've just created confusion? So I, I think third reading is in order, but maybe before, as seems to have been a practice in the past, before third reading gets presented, we, we, you know, change sixteen point two to read something else and move, move ahead on that basis. And then we can do the education we want, but also get this off the, get this off the table. Because our admin needs to do other things too. And that, that settles it for the day.
Yeah, just my personal opinion. And again, we're the voice of our, of the people, and so if they don't understand of something that we're voting on, we have the obligation to help them understand. Council Gerlock and then Council Wallack.
I guess simplest way I can put it is let's buy it, let's drive it. And then let's see if we can iron out the wrinkles before money back, money back period runs out in six months or whatever. Kind of do a review and, uh, because you're not, you're not going to get through. You got to have something in place in order to get a response to it. And, uh, so I think let's go with it, with the idea that we'll review it in six months and, and just see if there's things that need to be changed.
Thank you, Council Wallack.
Thank you. Um, just a question to admin. When is the highest time for complaints for, for dogs? Is there a season that's specific to that?
Uh, through the Chair to Council Wallack, uh, right about now, um, summertime is our, our, our hot topic for, uh, animal control.
And I guess one last question. Do we have, uh, by any chance, the results from the online survey? What, what that looked like? I can't remember. Uh, we can send that out to council again. It wasn't an agenda at one point. Um, and you know, I, I can commit that our department will work with communications to maybe put together frequently asked questions or something like that. And as we get questions, we could tuck and roll and improve that, uh, communication with folks. I'm, I'm kind of, um, just from talking with, uh, residents, I'm under the impression that the online survey was a lot of opposition. But that's just, I would really like to know those results. Anyway, we're at, uh, was there an amendment? Sorry. Uh, Council Hall, was there anything you want to change or amend it, or you're good with third reading?
Well, I mostly wanted to float that idea as a compromise to maybe, you know, move this along. Because I, I think, you know, part of our job is to advance issues. And if there's some concerns from colleagues, we need to respect that, but also figure out how do you move things forward in a productive way? I, I could be okay with this coming into effect immediately, because I think the stuff that I would have, tend to have concerns on are addressed in here through section seven and the other, the other stuff. But I mean, I would support a short-term change in date if that helped, uh, the table to feel comfortable.
All right, so who would like to, I'm assuming we're moving on to third and final reading, uh, if there's no further discussion? And would someone like to? Correct, Council Gerlock? Council Gerlock would like to move, um, that bylaw zero one zero twenty twenty five be given third and final reading as presented. If we're ready for the vote, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, and opposed, two, three, Council Wallack. I guess we're going, I think she might have stepped away. Are you? Oh, okay, are you in favor of third reading?
Yes.
Okay, so that's six and three. And has passed. All right. We move on to item seven point two, which is bylaw zero one two twenty twenty five, procedural bylaw amendment for electronic meetings. We are, uh, recommended from administration to give third reading to this bylaw. Is there any discussion prior to going to third reading? Council Minz?
I'm, uh, I'm still not in favor of, of taking out that, uh, oh, he's going to find it here, but taking out the, uh, number of meetings you can zoom, I'm, I'm still not in favor of that. I think, uh, in the, in the, in the wording of, of that part of the, of the bylaw, it said if you came and talked to council, you could zoom more meetings if, if it, if it was required. And again, we're not heartless or anything like that, but it just keeps, it, uh, it just working as council, I think, is way better working around the table than it is on, on Zoom and all this other stuff, unless it's absolutely necessary. But I'm, I'm still not in favor of voted against it last time. I'll vote against it this time.
Thank you, Council Gerlock.
Yeah, we had three delegations prepared before council today, gained considerable distances to be here, and I just think that's disrespectful. They show up at a meeting to meet with council, and maybe we have councils here. Uh, I just, this, this job is supposed to be our priority. When you, when you, when you take this position, it, it's, it's supposed to be your priority. And, uh, I think it's a priority to be in attendance, and, uh, there's no way I can support it.
Thank you. Sir, anybody, Council Hall?
I think, though, attendance and participation are not the same. And to sit at the meeting and say nothing has less value in my mind in every day of the week than to be an active participant. And there are moments and times where, uh, participation electronically is what makes sense in the lives of the counselors. Like, we're, we're here to make the right decisions for the county based on our, our best ability. And I, um, while my preference is that, you know, we're here in person as often as possible for various reasons that I don't think are up to council to judge. Uh, every counselor is accountable to the ratepayers generally and specifically to the ratepayers that elect them. And so if, uh, they feel that, uh, for whatever reason, they, they need to attend electronically, I would rather have them here. And so if uh they feel that uh for whatever reason, they they need to attend electronically, I would rather have them here electronically. Than not at all. And I don't think that I need to be their nanny uh to approve whether they show up electronically or not. So I. I think we're it's just a bit of overreach and and um. With the right culture, everybody will want to be here, but there are moments where. Again, people will be attending other meetings on behalf of the county and then not. Be able to travel back in time, and I would rather them again be attending electronically so that we have the benefit of their. Uh, expertise and comments. And uh, I'd be prepared to move third reading as presented and would move third reading as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion on this topic? Okay, um, I'll just add again, um, as we are the voice of our residents, um. This is another one that has uh been a hot topic of discussion and um. I'll just mention the overwhelming uh resident opinion is the expectations are. That counselors are to be in chambers as best they can, that it's wonderful to have this technology that allows us. To still participate when we are unable, absolutely unable to be here. But um their concern is abuse of that particular um. Uh, technology and and not making that effort to to be in chambers. So. That's just, don't bite the messenger. That is just the overwhelming um conversations that took place. So uh being, you know, again, we are the voice and. Uh, of our residents, I am also in uh opposition of removing that particular. Section from the bylaw as we know that there's definite provisions that can be made to uh go outside those six. Six visits on Zoom. All right, so with that, um. Councilor Hall would like to go ahead and uh that council uh give third reading to bylaw zero one twelve twenty twenty five. Is there any further discussion? All righty, we're going to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three, four, and opposed. One, two, three, four, five. So third reading fails.
So Madam Chair, um, just so you know, we're we're bringing back another bylaw then. We're still required to comply with bill twenty. Is it bill twenty? I can't remember the bill anymore. And our current procedural bylaw doesn't. So we're gonna bring back something until council passes an amendment. So we comply with the MGA.
Thank you. All righty, the next item we have is on page sixty three of your agenda package, and that is eight point one. Uh, so financial variance report, May thirty first, twenty twenty five, page sixty three. The recommendation here from administration is to receive the May thirty first, twenty twenty five financial variance report. And bank statement is information, but I will turn it over to. Director Emily, if you would like to weigh in or to Mr. Lackey.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and members of council. Uh, the various report is before you. Uh, we made a great stride in um. Cleaning it up the last few months. Our managers have been very responsive and very supportive. Um, there's it's not a perfect uh report at this point, uh, but we are continually improving it. So we're we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Would, Councilor Hall?
Uh, on page sixty six, line number one five five zero. Return on investment. I'm just wondering if you can comment on why at uh. At um forty one percent of the way through the year, we're only at five percent of uh our expected revenue. It it are interest earnings.
Ah, one five five zero here, the interest.
Um, so we do our, whenever we do our bank rec, that's we actually reconcile our um. Interest revenue. Right now, we're at March and we're still reconciling a lot of um the. Banking. We we got behind because of the audit, to be honest with you, but we're gonna be on top of it in the next report for sure.
So just so that I'm, we're all clear, the we're 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 reconciling to March, so. There um. The reliability of this has some. There's there are things missing in in the statements as presented.
Because uh for the bank rec portion of it, we always do um. It's a lot, it's all basically all the statements from the county's bank account. So we're just trying to reconcile. We just recently had a transition of um staff as well. And that's the main reason why we're kind of behind it up.
I'm sure the rec reconciliation is a um very onerous task with the number of transactions that occur here. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to weigh in on the financial report? You would like to move like the recommended motion? Um, I would just like to say thank you. Um, there is a huge amount of work that has gone into this and and it's very much appreciated. And as you mentioned, there's still work to be done and and as always, um, we look forward to. To seeing that uh that word come forward. Um. It's for me, it's really great to see uh where we're at. Um. And I think that uh you've done a really good job of doing that. So thank you very much. So if we don't have any further discussion, Councilor Chamsik would like to receive. The May thirty first, twenty twenty five financial variance report and bank statement as information. If we're good to go, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I don't believe there, yep, I don't believe there's any opposed. So that would be eight and O. Thank you. All right, item eight point two, the budget and reserve transfers. Um, I'm not going to read the whole recommendation, which is on page one hundred and six, one hundred and six of your report. But um I will turn the the floor over to Director Amblay for comment.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and members of council. Uh, first of all, I want to apologize. Uh, there was a page missing in the RFD when it was submitted to you. And I only caught it yesterday and it was my fault. I I must have um taken out a page before I submitted it to uh Ms. Blair. So I apologize for that. Uh, the the page was really important because it explained every single part of the motion that we're presenting to you. Uh, so basically, uh, going through the budget, uh, we're mid-year now. We're seeing that we're needing some adjustments to the budget. Um, as previously reported, some budget lines were not included in within the budget, certain budgets. So the motion is before you speak to a number of areas where we have shortfalls. Or we we'd like to adjust the budget line so that the variance report is more accurate. Uh, rather than seeing uh such variances within the report. Um, and some unexpected costs such as the wildfire and uh the police funding also, uh, we saw a shortfall in there. And our auditing went up uh a little bit. So we just want to balance the books and this motion, this very long motion before you. Is a result of many of these transactions. So i- if you like, we can walk you through every single bullet. Or if you have any specific questions, and again, I I don't know how much time you've had to to read this one page.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll I'll put it to the floor. Does council um want to go through each bullet item or do just to have any questions that you would like to pose? Go ahead, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. With regard to the financial audit, I'm wondering, do we have a contract in place with the auditor? Or why are we expecting to be twenty thousand dollars over the budget amount? Like, that seems like a fifty percent overrun. Have did we sign a scope change with them or? And how does that work?
Madam Chair, members of council, uh, we actually, uh, through the auditor, we have a proposal from them. We don't have an actual. Um, contract. It was just through the proposal. Um, there. There was no really scope change. They did get approval from us uh previously to uh extend additional work. Based on s- some some of the issues, one of it was finding files, gathering information. So they had to actually dig in a little bit deeper than typically. Um, part of it too was was staff turnover. So uh, that's why there was an ex- extra cost in there.
Thank you. You're okay, follow up?
Uh, well, I do think that they should honor the prices from the proposal when. They estimated those prices and they were awarded it. I think we would expect that of a construction contract unless there is a formal change. So I'm just kind of. Sad to see that, but I understand.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who has any questions? Councilor Gerlock and then Councilor Minz.
Is there another Cape Seal project this year? Or or is that from last year?
Sorry, the. So just to be clear, that's the way it was termed in the budget, um, but it's a soil stabilization. Uh, project that was tendered out. Uh, and so it's basically soil, cement and chip seal. So not a true Cape Seal project uh that. Some of you might be familiar with that term, but it's a soil stabilization, basically cement. And uh double chip seal. And there's three proposed locations.
Three, but but it's the same project that was in the budget. Just the tender came in way higher than we expected.
Yes.
And so these amendments would allow us to move forward.
Okay, go ahead, please, Stephanie, you're in.
So while we're discussing, so we have, we have the extra. Money to be able to, because it came in over budget instead of cutting down on a project or something like that. We have the extra money to be able to to do these projects.
If council passes this motion, otherwise we don't.
Okay. Okay.
So basically, what we're looking for is the additional two hundred and seventeen thousand, really. The rest was in budget.
Okay. Okay, no, that's good information. Uh, fifteen thousand dollars from general operating reserves to the recreational services budget for the multiplex capital expenses. Why all of a sudden we're bumping it up by fifteen thousand?
Well, that's because we bumped it down when the town lowered it, but our motion was to match the town's contribution, so.
The motion was to not exceed.
Alright, so so the town put in an extra fifteen thousand dollars?
Correct.
And so on to the capital side of the.
Correct.
So they're actually, they're actually. They're actually uh giving another fifteen thousand to paint the theater?
I believe in in the budget, if it mentions the town is um, that's where that fifteen thousand is that the town put in. That's going against the paint, right?
Yeah.
In that, it's mentioned in that budget, okay?
So we're putting fifteen thousand in the capital, but they're putting fifteen thousand into operate.
No, Ma- Madam Chair, it's my understanding they raised the fifteen thousand on their capital portion. If I'm not mistaken, from ninety to one oh five and and our, the purpose of our motion is to match what the town is doing.
And and the motion, I believe, is not match, it's not.
It's to not exceed, but our, we propose to match it. Let's be honest. We're, let's not kid ourselves here. We're proposing to send a check for fifteen thousand dollars in addition to the ninety.
Understood. It's just the motion is.
Yeah, just so it's clear as all that.
Right.
We, if you pass it. We intend to send.
Yep.
And if I can jump in, when that motion was made, the intent of it was our budget was higher than the town's. So it was just to limit our budget to what they put in. It wasn't like we have subsequently lowered our budget down. But at the time the motion was made, that language was was based on saying, we have this bigger amount approved, but we won't give away more than what they're doing. But but then somewhere along the way, we we actually lowered our total budget.
I I totally understand that. It's it's like all of a sudden. I'll just say it out loud here, they're getting a little bit of operating capital ahead of. What we're trying to do with them. So I'm not, I'm not happy with that, but. Underhandedness.
Okay, is there anyone else who has anything to add? Um, I just have one quick question. I haven't done the math, but being that we came in under budget for the Colton Bridge. And uh, we had asked that two hundred twenty thousand be drawn from tech uh from the reserves. Do we, are we around the two hundred and twenty thousand dollar in savings that it wouldn't have to come from reserves? I I haven't done the math and I apologize. It's I know I'm just throwing it out there.
I'm sorry, uh, Madam Chair, we don't uh, we don't have that information before us to confirm.
Okay, so I'm just assuming if there is, then the savings would, that's where it goes back into. Okay.
Yes, it would go back to surplus.
Thank you. And I just had one other quick question, um, just with regards to the uh bullet point. Um, I don't know what page it's on. Maybe it's on the same one. Anyway, it's just with regards to the change from the um. Transferring twenty thousand dollars from contracted services for uh the election preparation returning officer. Um, I'm assuming that there is no concern then that the uh returning officer is sufficiently funded. If we remove it from there, they're they're still sufficiently funded, I'm assuming.
Yes, Madam Chair, originally, we were going to contract the returning officer position, but we now have somebody internally doing that. So that's that there's a portion in the salary uh that is already covered. So we had this extra forty thousand dollars, which we. Thought we can just draw money from that rather than from reserves.
Thank you very much for that clarity. I appreciate that. Okay. Is there any further discussion from council? All righty, um. Who would have, did anybody pick the recommended motion? Did anybody own it? Who would like to own it? Councilor Gerlock would like to own it. There you go. Councilor Gerlock would like to um. Move the recommended motion for the budget and reserves transfers. How about that? All right. If there's no further discussion. You do? Go ahead.
Just one more. I was just looking here. Uh, the three hundred and fifty thousand for road construction. To for dust control. Is our dust control went up that much? We needed to hunt down three hundred and fifty, huh?
I can. Uh, previously, when we I got here, the budget for dust control was split. Kind of between rate pair versus uh county. This is just a consolidation of budgets so that there's one dust control budget. So um, we'll be able to figure out how much was repair request. But uh, it's just a consolidation of the budgets to have one dust control budget.
Yeah, cuz we, yeah, okay, yeah.
All good? All good. All right. So are we ready for that vote now that Councilor Gerlock? Put forward, the motion that Councilor Gerlock put forward, if we're all ready to go? No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
And it doesn't appear any opposed. Awesome. Thanks again for going through all of this. It's a huge, huge job. Did, oh, you're good? Okay. Thank you. I thought maybe you might have wanted to add something, but thank you again. Um, we are on item eight point three, which is page one oh nine of your package. This is the uh Rotary Club of Athabasca donation in kind request. Um, I just have a quick question on this one, if I if I may, cuz I had asked for it to come on. Um, great project that's that's happening down on the riverfront and and an in kind request is always um a really great way to go. But I was just curious about it only being seven hundred and fifty dollars for labor and gravel, so twenty five yards of three quarter inch gravel. And a day's labor only coming to seven hundred fifty. How did we come? Oh, sorry, he's gone.
Madam Chair, members of council, we actually consulted with the Director of Infrastructure Services for a cost.
Okay.
He felt seven hundred fifty would would be sufficient.
For the gravel and the, yeah, wow, okay, thank you. All right. Is there any discussion, uh, Councilor Anderson?
Move the recommended motion.
Councilor Anderson would like to move the recommended motion. And that is to approve an in kind donation of one day of labor and twenty five yards of three quarter inch gravel to the Rotary Club of Athabasca. For base preparation of the Rotary Pavilion at the Riverfront Play Park and further to source the funds from the grants to organizations budget. Councilor Chamsik.
Just a little confused. So I I'm all for, look, these are great things, a thousand percent. Um, but one day of labor, is that just like one person? Because I mean. Doing the math on that doesn't add up in my head. Not that I'm, again, so I want to be very clear about that. Um. But I guess, I trust administration, this numbers just isn't mathing right to me.
I'm I'm also confused. I thought that would just be for the gravel and I didn't include the labor. I could. Councilor Camp Town.
I can't speak to what anything costs or what kind of labor it takes, but anytime you see a project like a playground being built or something, you have. Twenty volunteers there. So we're not gonna need. So we're not gonna need maybe as much staff as if it was a hired county project, you need someone to drop off the gravel.
Kids, can I just follow up? I have, like it, like it, I totally a hundred percent get that. I just, it'd be nice, you know, to, in my opinion, you know, reflect those numbers better.
Yeah, okay, Counselor Mins?
I I, I feel exactly the same way, I'm not, I'm not talking against doing this work because I think it's great to do. But maybe show, we used to have a standard cost of twenty-six dollars a yard in Athabasca County. And I don't know what it's at now, I don't know what the standard cost is going across the county, so. Uh, if it, if it was actually projected at a thousand dollars or something like that of in kind work, great. If it's uh, I I'd just like to have the, the the actual true cost.
Madam Chair, to simplify this, cuz you guys are getting really in the weeds. Uh, the recommendation is just to do it, if you're comfortable with doing it. It doesn't actually talk about a dollar value in the um, in the recommendation, in the motion. So we'll just, we'll add it up and we'll subtract that amount from the, that budget. If it's more than that, that's fine, or.
I guess that's the biggest thing with putting down numbers, soon as you put them down, people start questioning it, right? So.
Yeah.
It's like, uh, why are we, why, why are we discussing it? It's just, well, just to make the numbers map.
We probably never should have quoted you a number. Because we've done that with other projects where we volunteered a whole bunch of gravel at other projects and um.
And you know, sometimes it's great to have that information, because like, I know when doing grants and stuff, having those volunteer hours count for something is wealth.
And I just, please, if if I may, um Director Ramley, also this, if I'm not mistaken, this amount that we're agreeing to would come off of our uh total for our uh grants to organizations, so that's why it was just.
Yes, Madam Chair, and that's why we we phrase it this way, is that you'll see the dollar value when the report comes to you in the future with uh with the grants to organizations. Uh, but also putting a dollar value later on, at least we can tell the community, this is a dollar value that we've had, the county has contributed to the community. So we just didn't want to donate it and money in, money out. We wanted to show uh in our books later on that this is what the county council has uh contributed to the community.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, are we ready for the the vote? Counselor Anderson's motion, recommended motion, I won't read it again, if we're ready to go, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I don't believe there's any opposed? Thank you. Uh, eight point three, are we just finished, where are we at? We are at nine point two, uh meeting calendars uh for July and August, page one thirty-nine of your package. There we go. Alrighty, um, I'll go ahead um and start and then we can go around the table. Um, Monday, um, it's just cuz it's on the, on here, Legion, um, there was the Military Motorcycle Police. Um, they've asked for um myself and uh Mayor Belay to be there, so that's on on June thirtieth at two thirty. Uh, July first, uh, the River Rats um committee has asked for remarks to be made uh by myself at the flag raising, which is noon on July first. Um, and I think there was a leftover question from uh last meeting about the July fifteenth committee of the whole meeting, uh whether or not counseling or moving.
Yeah, I I've talked to administration and they, they said we could.
Cancel.
We could cancel it.
Okay. The committee of the whole on July fifteenth um is uh up on the calendar to cancel at this point from the chair, from the pair. Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you. For July and August, speaking with Director Wilkinson, uh we're proposing to move the MPC meetings from nine fifteen till nine AM to support the agenda needs that we can get done in approximately twenty-five minutes.
Okay, so that's July thirty-first and August twenty-eighth for nine o'clock for MPC rather than nine fifteen. Counselor Mins?
So uh, just hit here, uh June twenty-seventh, so tomorrow we have a special meeting with the uh Regional uh Water Commission at Boyle, right, at nine thirty? Yeah, I think so, yeah, yeah, it's been sent out, eh?
Special meeting?
Yeah, special meeting, starting nine thirty at uh at Boyle. Have the uh Alice uh meeting on July seventh in Westlock, starting at ten. Counsel the, many of the whole meeting on the fifteenth and then a uh we have a Athabasca Regional Waste Meeting on, it was counseled on the twenty-third of June, move to July twenty-first.
Is that a nine thirty?
That one area starts at, no, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, okay, yeah, all right. Anybody, Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor Chapman?
Thank you. Being that July first marks the three-year mark of the reduced service level at the Boyle Hospital. I'd like to propose that on July second, whoever's available meets to take coffee and donuts to the staff at the healthcare center.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the village counselors may join us again. I just think it's a good way to recognize the impact this had on our community and uh hopefully it'll be the last time we have to do it, uh cuz I think there's some great news coming down the line, so.
Okay, and you 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 saw the email from, the remarks from um Mayor Durco on that as well?
Yes, and I had coffee with Mayor Durco yesterday, so.
Okay.
I just thought, though, to show the community that we haven't forgotten. Because so much of the work that happens for the Boyle Hospital advocacy happens behind the scenes and it's not really stuff that we can talk about publicly. Thought this, it would be something that we can acknowledge publicly that the impact that it's had on our community there.
Okay. Thank you, and is there a time?
I would propose ten AM.
Okay.
If it's okay.
And a.
Do we want to pass an actual motion so that we can set a budget and everything again this year?
Sure, sure, we can do that.
I'd make the motion.
Okay, you have a proposed budget?
We set the budget of seventy-five dollars last year.
Okay.
And we definitely did not exceed it, so I would propose the same.
And does that, I'm out of, where would that come out of retention committee?
Reeve Soreit?
Sorry?
Need to be of salary.
Perfect, done deal, yeah, but does that come out of the retention?
I would propose that it just comes out of our county funds, so um administration can find a light line in it. And even if we came out of our um budget that we have for our county lunches or council lunches or whatever it may be, um.
Okay.
I think it's a good signal that the county pays for it and doesn't expect a committee to pay for it, even though it's such a small amount.
Specifically from the county, okay. I think, if we may, we'll, we'll do the motion first and then we'll go back to calendars if if that's okay with everybody. So on Counselor Anderson's motion to um have, create a set, well, not create, but provide seventy-five dollar budget for a recognition for the Boyle Healthcare Center at ten AM on July second, does that?
Um, I don't think that everybody's available on the first, so I think the second is best day possible.
Okay, and that motion that was, is is okay, the recognition seventy-five dollars? All counselors who are available to attend, if we're ready for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I don't believe there was any opposed, alrighty, so we'll carry on with calendars, Counselor Chamsick?
Um, Village, um, August nineteenth and I believe tentatively the twenty-eighth for the town.
And that was, I'm sorry, Boyle on the nineteenth?
Yes.
Okay, Boyle nineteenth and twenty-eighth, you said town? That's a busy date. Alrighty, anybody else? Counselor Hall?
I wonder if there would be um, if it'd be sensible to just move the call meeting to the twenty-second um, rather than cancel it altogether to permit time for council to talk about some of the potential closed session items that are coming up? Like to revisit those in discussion, cuz I I feel like, based on what we know, the, some of those items may require multiple discussions and based on fallout from the IMC meeting, et cetera, there, it may benefit us to uh get together. But I would uh offer that as an idea and leave that to the CIO and the chair.
Well.
I guess I know that uh when we were discussing this, like to have meetings so close together and everybody's trying to go on holidays and have a little bit of time off, that's why I thought, okay, we'll just uh, just cancel the meeting and and uh that way that gives administration a break to be able to go on, go on their uh, have their holiday time and that, so. I don't know, it that uh, that's what was discussed with administration. There wasn't, wasn't a lot on the plate anyway, so it was like, okay, well then let's just cancel it and move it from there, but. I don't know if, I'm sure that they can make a meeting, but I don't know, that might be too close to the two, to the next meeting.
And uh, we always have the discretion to um seek a special meeting if necessary, I guess is the the alternative point of view.
Yeah.
And that way decisions can be made as well. I I'm sorry, when was the IMC meeting again, would it be?
No, that was in.
That was?
That was in August.
It's in August?
Wasn't it?
I can't remember now, do you remember when it was? Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Right, there you go, all right, so yeah, as as you mentioned, a special meeting can always be held um if necessary, um. Is any, does anyone else have any further for the calendars? If not, who's owning the motion to accept the calendars as amended, Counselor Cromwell? Would like to accept calendars as amended, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I've seen no opposed, calendars are complete. And we go into reports, um.
Sorry to interrupt, Reeve, I just have to leave for about half an hour.
I missed that. Oh, okay, thank you. I believe. We can take a recess for sure, folks, if everybody would like to, it's been an hour and a half since lunch, so. And administration would like to as well, so let's take a seven-minute break, please. Um, two oh, two thirteen on return, please. Um, two, two thirteen on return, please. So I see we have Counsel Cromwell on Zoom. At this point. Um, we are at reports. And I believe what did we have? We had the eleven point one W and AI, so the Island Lake Waterline Advisory Committee, there you go.
Uh, I had a meeting, uh, yesterday. Uh, Teams meeting, um, went very good, sounds that progress is going along pretty well, cut in any time, are you, were you there?
I was driving and, uh, did not attend.
Okay, not a problem. Uh, uh, the, got an alignment set through town, which is, uh, awesome. Uh, size of pipe.
Could you repeat that last line?
What's that?
Did you repeat that last line?
Awesome.
No, we, the alignment is set?
Yep.
Okay, you just didn't put enough emphasis on it to
Oh, okay.
For how valuable that is in terms of the progress.
Oh, that's great, plus it goes on, um. Size of pipe from two fifty to three hundred if, if the town goes with, uh, uh, doing the, the single line down, down to the creek. They're still waiting for a price on that, that'll come. Uh, they had a good discussion with transportation, actually with real people, he said, and it was great. And, uh, they got the okay to go from, from town limits up to the top of the hill, which is, what is that, about a mile? Mile, mile and a half and, and, uh, the transportation's right away due to the creek or due to the river and all that, so. But once they get to the top of the hill, probably going to look at going outside of the transportation boundary. Going out into the, uh, fields possibly. Uh, if they try to work with transportation, it could, it could delay, uh, even up to a year and a half to, uh, for this pipeline, so. Let's, uh, if, if, uh, if they go political, but we'll see what happens. Um, alignment, uh, approvals for booster station and fill stations, they're looking at that through, uh, transportation and, uh, they were meeting with the landman yesterday, uh, just, uh, or Wednesday to start that discussion, right? Uh, kind of like, uh, two-thirds of the alignment kind of set, uh, if all goes well. Uh, environmentals, uh, have to be done by September thirtieth, no later, for field assessments. Or else that will pro, uh, uh, stop it for another year. The progression will stop. So they're really pushing, they're, they're, they're still on schedule, but you know, they're, they're just on the edge of it. So hopefully it's, it keeps going the same way. Um, they're looking for information on how much the water trucks are going to be using, the, the fill station and the, uh, industrial users will be using it. And, uh, yeah, and, and that's, uh, July twenty-third, actually, that's what, yeah, July twenty-third is the next meeting. That's what I forgot to mark down on the thing there, so. And that'll be another Teams meeting, so. Yeah, that's, it's, it's moving along.
Progress is always a good thing, thank you.
So I don't know if I, if you can chime in any more than that, CEO, or I think that's about, everything's looking pretty good.
Awesome.
Bad.
Would you say that? Is it, took any objections, like, just being added to the calendar?
Yeah, for July twenty-third, I forgot that, that's, uh, it's a shoot me moment.
I don't believe there's any objections with counsel that we July twenty-third?
It's, uh, I- Island Lake at what time? I, I don't know, that'll be set. The last one, was it nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you're good.
You betcha.
Awesome, thank you for that. Um, I just wanted to mention on eleven point one AI for the, um, excellent report provided by Counselor Anderson, and thank you very much for attending, I was unable to, so I really appreciate your, uh, availability for that and, and the details that you provided, um, to us. Um, it has also caught a bit of attention, um, and it was brought to my attention that some of the stats that may have been prevent, presented um, during this event may not be accurate, so they're being questioned. So just for your knowledge, um, so that, that you're aware, um, and, and I, I guess one of the things that surprises me and I just, um, how the stats are, uh, with regards to the, um, surveys and whatnot that have been going around for this particular initiative of an independent police force in Alberta that eighty-seven and eighty-six, eighty-six and eighty-seven percent, I guess it is, of respondents strongly opposed, so I'm really just surprised that we're going forward with something that Albertans are, are, are strongly opposing, but again, I just wanted to say thank you, because that's huge, the information you provided, go ahead.
Thank you. And, um, just to clarify, these are the statistics that were provided by Minister Ellis.
Right, yeah.
During the, but he is the tone of it very much was, uh, he was pushing for private police or APP, so.
Yeah.
Um, very interesting, though, to be part of those, those conversations and to listen to what everybody else had to say. Thank you for allowing me to attend when you had scheduling conflicts.
I, I really appreciate you being there, because this is really good information and I, I, the report is excellent, so thank you very much for doing that, I really appreciate it. Alrighty, so with that.
The ignoring Albertans panel is moving around right now, and so we shouldn't be surprised that the government is charging ahead.
Yeah.
I mean, pensions, all that stuff, like it's par for the course.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, a head scratcher, for sure, um, and, and it's concerning, um, when, yeah. When we don't speak out, um, I guess, how do I put this? We're the voice of our residents and I expect the, the, um, the residents of Alberta also to be the voice as well, but it's pretty frustrating when, um, that doesn't happen. But anyway, we will move forward and, and does anybody have a motion here to accept? We don't need to accept reports, we're not doing any action on them. So we can just finally go into closed, I think. All those in favor, who's got the motion? Counsel Chamsick going to close, all those in favor? And I don't believe there's any opposed.
Aye.
You're good to go. Counsel Cromwell, if, if you're in and out, we'll let you know and we might end up, it might end up getting dropped, just so you, you're aware, because you're cutting in and out already. Um, yes, so we'll go into close thirteen. I think that was an I from Counsel Wallach, yep, thumbs up, alright, whenever you're ready, Mr. Jordan, let me know. We'll spin through the last bit of this, and we, we can keep this, right?
Oh, yes, that one, yeah.
Don't make me sing it.
You're good.
Awesome.
We're good to go?
Good.
Alrights. So coming out of close, we have three motions to make. Counselor Hall would like to make on thirteen point one, the motion that council approves the incorporation of the proposed fire department wages into Athabasca County's wage grid system effective July first, twenty twenty-five. No further, that was, yep, that was you, right?
The recommended motion, that's what I was gonna make.
The recommended motion, you betcha. All those in favor?
Aye.
And there was opposed?
Nay.
Nay, we've got one opposed and I don't know how many of us are here left, seven, six, six yes and one no. Okay. Thirteen point two. Counsel Minz would like to make the motion that, uh, council to direct administration to draft a letter from the Reeve on behalf of council to the Summer Villages, um, serving notice as discussed in closed. That's good, alright, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, that's seven, yeah, seven and oh. And the last item thirteen point four, Counsel Chamsick would like to make the motion to direct the Athabasca County to enter into a lease agreement with the town of Athabasca and the Athabasca Regional Multiplex Society. I don't think there's any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Seven and oh, no opposed.
Before you adjourn, I would also make a notice of motion for reconsideration of the decision made in item six point one, as outlined in the procedural bylaw.
Thank you. Alrighty, made that one down, okay. I think we are now officially adjourned. Um, it's at four oh seven?